I'm calling this meeting of the Lake Mills City Council for June 20, 2023 to order. Misty, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Kurler.
Here.
Mr. Waters.
Here.
Mr. Fields.
Here.
And Ms. Quinow did previously inform staff that she'd be unavailable this evening, and Mrs. Bishop has informed the council president that she'll be arriving shortly.
Okay, so I'll let you know when she arrives, and in the meantime, please rise for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is correction and acceptance of the city council meeting minutes of June 6, 2023. Are there any corrections or comments on those minutes from council members?
Nope.
No? Okay, hearing none, we'll accept those minutes into our record. So, we'll move on to correspondence. Mr. Fields, would you like to go first?
Sure. I just had the one email about the privilege in the street. That's all I had for the last two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Waters.
Yeah, I attended a College Street meeting last week and had correspondence on the Mill Pond Channel and the Bayberry.
Okay, thank you.
Right away.
Oh.
I didn't want to duplicate, I guess.
Oh, okay, great. Well, in addition to those, I received correspondence about the city band, and thanks to the city for continuing to support them. Their next concert is tomorrow evening. I also received an invitation to the legendary Lane ribbon cutting, which is this coming Friday at 4:00 p.m. Several contacts regarding Rock Lake water levels and dam management, contact about the Sandy Beach redevelopment. I also attended the College Street Public Information Meeting, and I attended the Joint Rock Lake Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. So, Mrs. Bishop has just arrived. Can I put you on the spot to share your correspondence?
Sure. Okay, deep breath here, right up the stairs. I had a correspondence regarding the emergency contact number for the new ambulance service. I had a contact regarding the College Street privilege in the street, which is an agenda item tonight. I had a contact regarding, or at least a couple, regarding the construction trailer at Summer Ridge, and also the flags on Main Street. And I think, Ms. Kurler, you were just saying this one, I had a contact about the city bandstand project.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, next agenda item is questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. For anyone attending online, please type your name and address in the chat feature. Okay, we'll start within the room here. Susan?
Hi. My name is Susan Trier, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Rock Lake Improvement Association. Our address is P.O. Box 555, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. And we'd like to make a few brief comments on two issues tonight. The first issue is Rock Lake's water levels. Today's water levels are due to a lack of rain. Rock Lake experienced a similar situation in 2021, and RLI A and the Jefferson County's Land and Water Conservation Department co-wrote an in-depth article in The Leader to explain where Rock Lake's waters come from, how those waters are managed, and the impact of rain on lake levels. With this drought, both the city and Land Water Conservation Department received numerous phone calls from residents, and RLI A began to advocate in May to discuss this issue through a forum rather than another article in the newspaper. A forum which seeks to educate residents about the complexity of the issue as well as gather residents' input is valuable for clear and open communication. It is also required by the DNR if the city decides to start the process of asking the DNR to review whether the date to hold back the water to achieve summer water levels should be adjusted earlier to catch additional spring rains. RLI A has met with city staff to advocate for the public forum and review the city's historic water level logs and correspondence. We had multiple conversations with the DNR department, who sets our dams' operating orders. These orders specify the water levels, the dates for those water levels, as well as the minimum discharge into Rock Creek. In our discussions, we reviewed the history of the development of our current order as well as the process to change that order, either by changing water levels or changing the dates to meet the existing water levels. We also consulted with the Land Water Conservation Department for their perspective. We are very pleased that the council is interested in exploring this issue. In order for a forum to be effective, the stakeholders of this issue, city staff, DNR, the Land Water Conservation Department, RLI A, and Joint Rock Lake Committee, need to meet shortly to discuss how to proceed. Clear coordination between the stakeholders will be critical to have a successful forum. We are glad to share our research with the Joint Rock Lake Committee at their July committee meeting and look forward to working together with all the stakeholders to start the community discussion and evaluation of the situation. We will also update the earlier Leader article, just in case the stakeholders believe it is a valuable addition to the discussion. The second issue we'd like to discuss is the Sandy Beach renovation. This is a critical project where the city has the opportunity to rethink how stormwater is managed, a chance to incorporate practices that seek to manage stormwater where it falls. Sometimes this is called green infrastructure versus getting the water to the lake as fast as possible, sometimes called gray infrastructure. In the process, the city can help educate residents on what they can do to their own properties to manage stormwaters, as well as protect Lake Mills' greatest iconic asset, which is Rock Lake. As you begin to think about the restaurant, we urge you to cite it similarly to the Sand Bar, which was the previous restaurant. The Sand Bar was about 130 feet from the shoreline. We would like to see this 130-feet distance maintained as a minimum setback. As you may recall, the Sand Bar patrons enjoyed gorgeous lake views, but the restaurant's placement also offered unimpeded beach access to non-resident visitors, as well as some privacy to the restaurant patrons using outdoor seating. We calculated the Sand Bar setback using old aerial photos, so it was a guesstimate. Another aspect of the restaurant we'd like you to consider is to require the installation of pervious surfaces for the outdoor seating area and walkways, so that these improvements will minimize surface runoff. Runoff from the restaurant's roof should be managed with a rain garden. Another possibility is to have the majority of the roof runoff be channeled into a rain garden, and then a portion be directed to what the City of Madison's Green Infrastructure Group calls "rain garden light," which is simply a rain chain discharging to a five-by-five-foot square of amended soil planted with some native plants. This option has a much smaller footprint than a traditional rain garden, but it was also found to increase infiltration about 55%. It would be interesting to have each option as a demonstration practice for residents and visitors. Lastly, we would like to strongly encourage you to revisit your thoughts about the size of the parking lot. In Meaden Hunt's concept design, the number of spaces was expanded from 127 to 335. That design also included a banquet facility. According to the city's recent survey, the majority of residents did not desire a banquet facility. Consequently, the size of the parking lot should be reduced. This might actually be a very good time to think about revisiting the project's full concept design anyways, since other aspects, like the cabins, are being discarded. Thank you so much for your attention. Good luck, good luck in your upcoming work session, and we look forward to continuing these conversations with you. Thanks.
Susan, I missed that old parking spot number. What was that?
Yes, the Meaden Hunt moves the number of parking spaces from 127 to 335.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Clarifications?
Good evening. I'm Patricia Cicero at 517 College Street. I am the Director of the Jefferson County Land and Water Conservation Department, and I just wanted to touch on a couple items that are on your agenda tonight. The first one is the resolution sending to the Joint Rock Lake Committee information regarding the Rock Lake water levels. Staff from our office attend the Joint Rock Lake Committee meetings, and we can provide a bunch of data and history about water levels on Rock Lake, including we have volunteers who record the ice-off dates, so we have that data. The next thing I wanted to talk about was the resolution on the Mill Pond and forming a Mill Pond Committee. First of all, I just wanted to remind you that the Mill Pond is a DNR-designated critical habitat area, and it's designated this because the aquatic vegetation that is in that Mill Pond offers critical or unique fish and wildlife habitat. So, the Jefferson County Land and Water Conservation Department should somehow be involved with this committee or process, and there are several reasons I think that. First of all, we have a lot of scientific knowledge. This includes existing and past work on the Mill Pond. So, for instance, we have performed two aquatic plant surveys, one in 2017 and one in 2022. We have helped with one-location fish survey in the Mill Pond, which we found six, we are looking at nearshore fish, so it's the really tiny fish, and we found six fish species, two of which were special fish in a certain way. One is an Iowa darter, which is intolerant to environmental degradation, and the other one is called a least darter, and that's a Wisconsin special concern species. So again, it just highlights the importance of that habitat. There also have been frog and toad surveys done around the Mill Pond, and two special concern species have been identified there. Currently, in partnership with the Rock Lake Improvement Association, there's also volunteers collecting total phosphorus data at the outlet. They are also collecting total phosphorus data at all the inlets into the lake, so I thought that would be important. So, besides this scientific knowledge that we have, that we can provide, we also have experience designing studies, writing Department of Natural Resource grants, and also writing Department of Natural Resource permits. We're also very knowledgeable about practices that could be useful for things such as shoreline erosion control practices. I know there had been some retaining walls, and there's a fair amount of use shore fishing there, so there's some erosion that's going on. So, we work on those issues every day and have engineers that we have at our disposal that are, work with the Department of Agriculture, and so they come to us for free, and so we can provide some of those services. So, again, I just wanted to suggest that the Land and Water Conservation Committee be somehow involved in that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is number seven, the City Managers' Report. Mr. Daley?
I will be out of the office starting late tomorrow morning through Friday at the Wisconsin City Managers' Association Conference up in Green Bay, and then I'll be out of the office on taking some vacation days on next week, Monday and Tuesday. Other than that, I have no other updates for you. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I see we have several financial reports and a police department report. Any questions on those? Mr. Fields?
I was just wondering if we've seen any EMS-type run reports. Usually, we've been getting reports from EMS and fire department if those have been coming in.
I'll check with Captain Theater. I'm not sure that we've had the EMS run reports included. Former Chief Yandre was compiling those. I'll check with Captain Theater to see if the fire department still has those available. EMS, any run reports from Lake Mills EMS? I believe we received the, I think, a monthly email from them informing us whether they have met the terms of their contract as far as response times. I can try and pull it up on my email, but the last one I received indicated that they were within their contract of 90% of calls within the, I think, 12-minute response time to scene.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll move on to Agenda Item 8, which is Council Member Board Reports and Acceptance of Minutes. We have the Parks Board minutes from February 22, 2023, and April 19 of 2023. Were there any questions or comments on those reports? I would just note, on the February report, I noticed that there was some discussion regarding the boat slips issue, and I don't know if we've heard anything further about boat slips from the Parks Board, so I don't know if that's still on their radar or not. Okay, so we'll, no questions or changes, we'll accept those minutes into the record.
Steve, you're currently on the Parks Board. I know these minutes were prior to that, but was there any discussion on the boat slips in your last meeting?
Mr. Waters, I'm actually now on the Parks Board.
I apologize. Steve was the old one.
I'm the old one.
We'll just pin Steve with a question he can't answer. I'm kidding. No, there was no discussion at the last meeting where I was actually on Parks Board. We only talked about the comprehensive plan in our comments to that. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to number nine, Council Business. And the first item, Letter A, is Discussion Decision on a Class B Beer Retail License for Dog and Shrub Distillery. Let's see, we don't have a written resolution on this, so we just need a motion.
Okay, I move to approve the Class B Beer Retail License for Dog and Shrub Distillery, and I have one question about that when we get to it, but...
I'll second.
Oh, I heard Mr. Waters first. So, we have, Mrs. Bishop made the motion, seconded by Mr. Waters. Can we have a staff comment before we have questions?
Misty, can you provide a summary?
The owner is independent and has the distillery at 145 Industrial Drive, which is permitted through the Department of Revenue. They are requesting a Class B Beer Retail License, which is allowable with their distillery permit, and looking to appoint the individual, applicant Bruce Moncrief, as the agent.
So, would that, would that be a permit granted by the city, or would that be a permit granted by the state?
The Class B Beer Retail License is licensed by the city. The distillery is permitted by the state.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Bishop, did you still have a question?
Yes, my question was, and I apologize, I don't have the actual documents in front of me right now, and I can't recall when I reviewed them. I thought the name had changed to Salty Dog Distillery, so do we need to reflect that name change in what we're approving today, or are they applying under the old name?
The application was made under the old name. I've heard just through town, not from the applicant himself, that the name has changed. I believe it's just doing business as. The application, though, was, is him as an individual at 145 Industrial Drive, so the Dog and Shrub Distillery part would just be the doing business as. And with the name change, I think that that's allowable. It is something that has to be noticed, and so if there's an issue, I'd have to contact my contact at Department of Revenue, but I believe we can just amend the doing business as, just regular business through the city, through administration.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Waters?
Misty, one other question. I think we had done a similar application in one of the last couple meetings with the Barcade, and I believe that was some type of a reserved permit or something to that effect. How is this different than that, I guess, is my question?
Patrick's Barcade, they actually had already obtained their Class B Beer Retail License, and then what they were looking for at the last meeting was a reserve Class B liquor license. The liquor, Class B liquor licenses are limited with a quota, and we were at max on the liquor end. And then the only way to get one would be through available reserve, which we had available. So, the beer doesn't have that same quota restraint as the liquor does.
Fantastic. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions? Or discussion? Okay, if not, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. On to Agenda Item Letter B. This is the Discussion Decision on a Private Well Permit for the Lake Mills Golf Club at 800 South Main Street. Again, I think we just need a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve a private well permit at the Lake Mills Golf Club, 800 South Main Street.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Fields. Any staff discussion on this one?
This is an annual approval that the city council undertakes each year. If there's questions regarding the process, Clerk Quest should be able to answer them. But again, this is a regular item on the council's agenda each year.
So, I know we had a consent agenda with several private well applications at our last meeting, and this one was just maybe not ready for approval at that time, or is there anything different about this one, Ms. Quest?
Nothing different. It wasn't ready. The application is required along with the $5 application or well permit fee, and then two passing samples of the water that have to be taken two weeks apart. So, they needed just a little bit more time to get that second sampling, and both are in and both passed, so there's no reason to deny the permit on that end.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this one? Okay, and then we have a roll call vote on approval of a private well permit for the Lake Mills Golf Club at 800 South Main Street.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, the next item, Letter C, is Resolution 23-39 regarding a privilege in the street for Tom Danert. We do have a written resolution on this one. Misty, would you read that title, please?
City Council Resolution 23-39 authorizing the granting of a privilege in the street for prohibited encroachment or encumbrance in the right-of-way at 234 Lake Shore Drive.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 23-39, granting the privilege of the street for prohibited encroachment and right-of-way at 234 Lake Shore Drive.
Motion by Mr. Fields?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Waters. Okay, staff?
Director Hermanson was not available to join us this evening, but a memo from him is included in your packet as required by ordinance. He lists a number of reasons for his recommendation, which is to deny the privilege in the street. I will not run through each one for you unless there's specific questions about either one, but I would say that the, there's two kind of parts to this that the city council will want to consider. The first is whether the city council determines that this area is a driveway. If the area is a driveway, then it would be a zoning code issue, which the zoning code does not allow for two driveways serving one property. If the council determines that it is a driveway, then the city council would be unable to grant the privilege in the street as a zoning variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals would be the only avenue for a variance from the zoning code. If the city council determines that it is not a driveway, that this piece of pavement is not a driveway, then you can act on the privilege in the street and have to determine whether the proposed use, as far as off-street parking, is a preferable use of the right-of-way or a use of the right-of-way in which you would like to permit in this area. So, if there's any questions, we're happy to answer them, but Director Hermanson's memo is included in your packet, which details his recommendation, and then we are available to answer questions.
Thank you, and I know that Mr. and Mrs. Danert are here in the audience. Would anybody like to ask them to come up and address their petition?
Motion to suspend...
A motion to suspend the rules to allow the Danerts to address the issue.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Fields to suspend the rules. Mr. Danert, if you'd like to come up to the microphone?
Thank you. I seem to have a knack to...
So, we have your application, but... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I seem to have a knack to find some weird issues with sidewalks and driveways in the city, but I appreciate your willingness to listen to me. I did, and I think you guys all alluded to the fact that I emailed the city council with some of the concerns that Mr. Hermanson had, and he was gracious enough in his memo to something along the lines of "allow me to respond," which I did via that memo. I did not include city staff, not sure if they saw it at all, but it is not a driveway. It was required to be curbed up during the reconstruction, or the addition, and we put in a new driveway. The city required it to be curbed, it still is to this day, it will continue to be curbed. In my application, just to summarize a couple things, I misstated that I was seeking to retain the concrete driveway. In my email, I restated and reiterated that it's a concrete pad to take that driveway discussion out of the, out of the, out of the discussion. And Mr. Hermanson also alluded to the fact that there's some issues with parking in the right-of-way, and I was, I meant to clarify that College Street, you can only park on one side of the road, so there's limited public parking. It's quite busy with parking during times of the College Street on pure use, as well as church functions, and that concrete pad will allow us to access the carriage house, especially in the winter when there's snow, it's hard to clear snow away from a grass yard or approach. And like I said, I didn't include the city staff on that, so I'm not sure if there's any clarification they're interested in hearing with, in my email and response, but I think the biggest thing is I was just trying to take a practical look at this, and I don't think there are any utilities that are underneath that driveway, which would obviously be a concern for the College Street reconstruction process. If there were, obviously, it would have to be torn up, including the new driveway, to allow for water, electrical, whatever other utilities, gas may exist. So... So, uh, I don't really think there's a practical need to remove it. And, uh, in the future, if it does need to re, be removed, it'll be me or the homeowner's responsibility to remove that, to allow the city access to the right-of-way. So, uh, just a common sense, practical approach. Those were, uh, kind of my thoughts going into it. I did have a discussion early on in the process with Mr. Waters. And, um, he suggested this may be an option. And I also had a lengthy discussion with Mr. Drescher. Again, said that, you know, this may be an option. I explored a variance, but didn't think that was appropriate and a little bit onerous for myself and the city. So, uh, this is the option that I'm hoping to explore.
Thank you, Mr. Danert. Are there any questions for Mr. Danert? Mrs. Bishop?
Mr. Janet, thank you for being here. Um, something in your comment that I don't think I realized, you said that the area leading to the concrete pad is curbed, meaning that there is no longer a curb cut, which would allow somebody to drive onto it, but a curb has been added. When was that done?
2021? Uh, when we, we put an addition on the house, which required a new driveway. And in that permitting process, uh, the city required the old driveway to be curbed, uh, in effect, taking away the fact that it's a driveway. And it remains that way and it, it will, as far as I understand with the, the College Street reconstruction. Um, and what I understand would happen if this privilege in the street is not granted is that about this far, let's say, two or three feet from my garage, out will be concrete and then from there to the curb would be grass, is what I understand. And that, that grass is going to impede the ability to, especially in the winter, to, to get a vehicle off of College Street into that garage.
So, Mr. Danert, I have a follow-up question to that. So you have a new driveway?
Yes.
New, um, uh, building and, and parking stalls there. Um, so how do you access this concrete pad from your new driveway?
Well, we, we currently can drive over the curb, like anybody can into any part of their property. And there's, the throat of the driveway has a space between it that you can drive across. But it, it's a similar situation. It's not concrete. It's not, you can't clear it with snow.
Any other questions? Mr. Fields, any questions? Um, Mr. Daley, I have a question for you. Um, if you're aware from the, um, when the building permit was issued for the expansion that Mr. Danert was speaking of, um, did the city require the curbing and if so, or regardless, who, who installed the curbing?
It was required to be curbed off, uh, during the, uh, permitting process for the installation of the, um, new driveway. Uh, and it was contemplated that when the College Street Reconstruction Project would occur, that the remainder of the pavement would be removed during that project.
And I think we have a, a plan, actually that was, um, included with the application that shows the excerpt from the College Street Construction Plan. And that shows that area to be removed, right, that concrete pad?
That's correct. The drawing submitted with the new driveway permit showed the old paved area being, uh, removed. Um, that permit was, uh, submitted by, uh, Mr. Steve Danert.
Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Who's my dad?
Okay.
Former owner of the property. But that's, that's the main reason, that's the reason I'm here, asking for the privilege in the street, because the concrete is to be removed. So I'm just asking to retain that. And I don't, like I said, I don't think there's any negative to the city or the public. And, and if they ever need access, it, it's not the city's cost to remove it. It's mine.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Danert or for staff? Any discussion on this item?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Danert. Any discussion? Mrs. Bishop?
Okay, I'm going to open my mouth here. I, uh, I try really hard to err on the side of common sense, helping the homeowner, individual property rights. Um, which this request is in direct conflict with our city code for having two driveways. And I do find that this is a driveway. It was used as a driveway for 70 years. Um, it was only curbed because a new driveway was being put in. Um, and so our city code does not allow two driveways. On that basis, I am inclined to vote to not approve this privilege in the street. Anybody else who is moving their, or building a new, um, garage, moving their garage, putting in a new driveway, would not be allowed to keep their old driveway if it violated this ordinance. Um, so that's where I'm leaning right now. I didn't find the argument that this was instead a concrete pad to be persuasive. Um, so that's my reasoning right now. Thank you.
Any other comments? Um, I'll add, um, a couple of comments. Uh, first of all, I agree with you, uh, Mrs. Bishop, that, um, this should have been addressed at the time that the permit was issued. And if the property owner contemplated keeping access, that should have been incorporated in the design with whatever building expansion was done, so that the ordinance would be met, so that there would be the result of one driveway. Uh, from the information we've gathered today and from past conversations about the College Street Reconstruction, um, I think the, the property owners were made aware that this was going to be a requirement they were allowed to keep it temporarily, because the street would be torn up in a couple of years and, and, um, could be taken care of at that time. But on top of all of those things, I guess I, I take very seriously that this is public property. This is a public, publicly owned property in the right-of-way. And I don't think it's in the city's interest, the people of the city, to have a private parking spot in the right-of-way. So that's the most compelling to me. Um, I think there are multiple parking spaces available on this property and along adjacent streets. So to whether it's called a driveway or a parking spot, I, I don't think, um, this is in the city's interest to approve this privilege. Mr. Waters?
Um, I did review Mr. Hermanson's memo and his reference to the right-of-way for 2021. I did go back and review that document. And, uh, that, the information within that document will weigh heavily in my decision.
Any other discussion or questions or comment? Okay, Misty, can we have a roll call? On Resolution 23-39, privilege in the street for Tom Danert, 234 Lake Shore Drive?
Mr. Fields?
No.
Ms. Curver?
No.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
This motion fails?
Thank you. Okay, the next item is Resolution 2340 regarding a Sandy Beach food truck lease agreement. Misty, would you read that, um, title, please?
Resolution 23-40 directing the city manager to execute an agreement with Taco Fiesta LLC for the provision of seasonal food and concession services at Sandy Beach Park.
I have a motion. Okay, I move to approve Resolution 23-40 Sandy Beach Food Truck Agreement for Taco Fiesta LLC, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Waters. Any staff comment?
Sure. Uh, the city was approached by Taco Fiesta, uh, with interest in having a food truck at Sandy Beach. Uh, they've met with city staff and discussed it. Um, this is the standard, uh, lease agreement included in your packet tailored to, um, Taco Fiesta specifically. Um, if approved tonight, um, s-, uh, the director, grounds and facilities will, uh, finalize, uh, exactly where their, um, the placement of their food truck will be where they'll operate from. Um, but staff is, uh, recommending approval.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Or discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Waters?
Um, I, I, I know that there was some, some regulations and maybe some question about how many, um, people are going to be operating at Sandy Beach this year. How many are, are we looking at at this point before this application?
Uh, three food trucks. Oh, before?
Yeah.
Uh, two, two food trucks. One, uh, ice cream, uh, truck and then, um, one more full, full-service restaurant food truck.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Okay, uh, letter E on the agenda, Resolution 23-41 Establishing an Ad-Hoc Committee for Mill Pond Maintenance and Preservation. Misty, would you read that title, please?
Resolution 23-41 Establishing an Ad-Hoc Committee to Make Certain Recommendations Concerning Citizen and City Goals for the Uses, Maintenance and Preservation of the Mill Pond.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Oh, uh, motion for approval of Resolution 23-41 Establishing an Ad-Hoc Committee, Mill Pond Maintenance and Preservation.
I will second that.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mrs. Bishop. Um, and we were provided a, uh, paper copy of a memorandum from Mrs. Bishop. And I believe this is your proposed resolution?
Uh, yes, ma'am. The resolution's mine, but the memo is for a, a next agenda item.
That's for a different item.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, but I believe this, um, resolution was, uh, drafted by you. So, uh, can I ask you to go through it for us?
Okay, sure. Well, I'm not going to, uh, go through the whereas's or read it unless we want to talk about specifics. Um, but the basis and reasoning for bringing about this, um, ad hoc committee is before I came on the, uh, council and in my first couple of years of the council, there was a lot of communication and comments from citizens about, uh, the condition of the mill pond. Um, since then, I've learned a little bit about the history of the mill pond, um, as well as how the current condition impacts, um, prior uses and now current and future uses. Um, in regard to the comments we also had today from Ms. Cicero and Ms. Tree are generally about water, um, activities and water, um, preservation and nature preservation. Um, the mill pond and how it's used in the city, I think, should be addressed. And it should have a committee of people who are interested parties and citizens at large, um, to address those things. And it should take into account, you know, the city of Lake Mills resources, DNR resources, as well as our Joint Rock Lake Resources and the, there's another Joint Rock Lake Committee. I always screw up the two names. I'm so sorry, everyone. Um, but to really look at the issue as a whole and then to provide recommendations and feedback to the council as to, here's what the DNR requires, here are your next steps, here's the cost, if any, and to really give a full-picture approach that, that the city can take and act upon. So that's my rationale for, uh, bringing forth this committee. Uh, Mr. Waters did have a question for me previously. Do you want me to address that now or did you want to ask or discuss that first, Mr. Waters?
You, either way, um, I'll, I'll go ahead and ask questions and, and maybe I'll expand on my questions a little bit, but-
Okay, certainly.
One of my questions was the role of the, uh, council liaison person. Um, would they be a voting member and what function would they have in this committee?
Sure. And my intent for, for, first off, it's a, a five-person committee with a city council liaison added, making it six people. Um, but my intent was for the city council liaison to not be a voting member. My intent was for that person to be a liaison to, um, help the committee get resources from the city, whether it's talking to staff or getting documentation, and then be able to report back to the city council during our regular meetings about any progress or questions or hiccups the committee may be having. Um, I wanted to leave the five-person board as is, to be a, an odd number and to, uh, be able to break any ties there as well. So that was my reasoning for that. And if that's not properly reflected, um, I would certainly entertain a, a motion to change that or to properly reflect that in the resolution.
Yeah, I'm hoping we don't have any two, two ties tonight, since we're leaving number tonight. But, uh, we'll, we'll see how that goes. Um, another question was, uh, what was that other question? Oh, was, um, you, you kind of addressed that the liaison person would be, would be reporting back to council. One of my concerns is that, that maybe the committee stills, um, gets stagnant at some point. Uh, I was wondering if maybe we could include something like a, a timeframe for the committee or maybe every six months, there would be a formal report that comes back to council so that we can see, understand progress, uh, maybe give input at that point the, of some things that maybe they should be looking at moving forward, that, that type of thing.
Sure. I would definitely, um, be willing to include, you know, some kind of reporting mechanism or timeline. I didn't want to put, if you say like, oh, you have three years to do this thing, people are going to take three years. You know, is my concern. So I wanted them, without putting a timeline, a timeline on it for the committee to say, okay, like, here's how we're going to get this done in our own time and like, have the onus be on them or it's on you, like, you're going to have to keep meeting until you finish this. But maybe if there are reporting requirements, that would help facilitate that.
So if we get maybe a six-month in there, that would be nice to, to hear back from them and make sure that things are moving forward, I guess.
Where, did you have a recommendation?
Whereas or something.
May, may I maybe just ask a couple of questions or comments before we go to that? Um, and Mr. Fields, I don't know if you have any. Um, I was looking back at this and I, um, first of all, Mrs. Bishop, I really appreciate you, um, taking the initiative to put this together and present this to us. Because as you said, we, I think we all, most of us joined the council at close to the same time and we're hearing, um, issues. And we've received, um, some of the historic information about what the city has done and, you know, put together a feasibility study, submitted it to DNR, got information back from DNR. And, um, where there was, you know, some additional steps that were needed. We've, we have, um, had kind of a placeholder, uh, dollars in our city council budget for a number of years to, you know, do some study or something like that, uh, but hasn't really moved forward. So that was just, I guess, a refresher for everybody on a li- little bit of the history. And thank you for, you know, kind of keeping the initiative going so it doesn't languish. I guess the, one of the first things I thought of when I looked at this, the second whereas says the Mill Pond Park. And all of a sudden I thought, well, Parks Board. So why couldn't we simply refer this to the Parks Board? That seems like that would be directly within their wheelhouse. They could do all the same things that you've, um, laid out here, which I think are good. Um, um, you know, in terms of the direction for the committee. But we have people already in place, it's already staffed, there's a structure, there's, you know, public meetings and things like that. And I wondered if you had thought about, um, assigning it to the Parks Board and why you don't think that would work?
Yeah, yes, I have, um, I'm going to answer it in one part with a question and then second part with a statement. Um, the first part with the question, I'm not sure if the Mill Pond Park actually includes the waterway or where that would end, or if the Mill Pond Park is just the land and the access in the area around the waterway. So I, that's up in the air. That's a question mark for me. Um, the second thing is that the Parks Board, um, covers a much broader area. Yes, this could be something they look at, so I'm, again, open to that possibility. But I'd really like to get people who are directly affected by the, um, condition of the mill pond, such as, you know, and adjacent property owners, such as a boulder, um, to really take into account other, um, points of view that maybe not everybody on the Park Board represents. So, um, that's one way forward. This resolution is one way forward. Again, I'm, I'm open to discussion and, and figuring out how to do this in the best way for it, so.
Thank you. And I guess another reason that I bring that up and I think about the strategic plan that we developed last year and some of our, um, strategic objectives that we're trying to make progress on. Um, and where we even heard tonight, uh, people want to have more input on Sandy Beach redevelopment. We've got emergency services on our agenda tonight. You know, a number of other major items that we want to make progress on. And while I agree that this is important and this project has kind of languished, this feels like, um, a lot of effort to put in. And that's why I was hoping that we could be more efficient with our citizens and our staff by using an existing committee rather than, um, creating a new one.
Just to follow up on that, uh, Joint Rock Lake would also probably have jurisdiction as much as the, the Park Board would in this regard. So having an ad hoc would allow members from both of those committees possibly to, to serve on this committee.
And Mr. Fields, be sure to chime in if you have anything you want to say. I guess the thought that I would have about that, I agree, and you're right, there's sort of this question mark, like, who's our committee that we would go to when it comes to dredging and the water? And I think there's, you know, there's the land adjacent to it, as well as the water and the sediment to think about. I want to circle back to Mr. Waters, one of your earlier suggestions, and I would definitely agree that this should be time-limited. If we are gonna create a new ad hoc committee, I'd like them to move relatively quickly because it's going to take a lot of resources for our staff to staff that, and we have a lot of other priorities for them, so I just don't want that to be something that languishes and that we do take full advantage of, as you said, the other resources, the other committees, the county, natural resource organizations that would be interested in this. Mr. Fields, any thoughts, are you following along?
No, no, that was excellent. I know when I was involved in the Parks Board here several years ago, we did look at this a couple of different times with the dredging projects, and, you know, talking about the dam and a few other things, and the water level did come up several times. So I know there's a lot of history, a lot of knowledge on the Parks Board, who could definitely help out with this.
Well, um, Mrs. Bishop, I know you've expressed a preference for this direction, and again, I'm very appreciative of your work here. I would like to formally propose an amendment to this that would refer this to the Parks Board. And I kind of wanted to see how the discussion went before deciding to move that forward, but I did draft a proposed amendment. It really retains the guts of what you've drafted, and I'll send it by email to you, Mr. Fields. So, uh, let's see, I can, what I've handed to each of you is a clean copy of a resolution twenty-three dash forty-one A, and then the pages following it have, kind of attract changes, so it shows what I've changed. And really, what I'm proposing is just to refer this to the Parks Board, as opposed to creating a new committee. I've added a final whereas that refers to our municipal code, that refers to the Parks Board as an advisory body. And then section one is replaced with a Parks Board referral. Section two is the same, and section three just has a duration of asking for a final report by December one, which kind of relates to that timeline that we were discussing.
December one of which year?
Sorry, December one of 2023, so it would be just the rest of this calendar year. So I'm proposing, um, an amendment to the resolution as reflected by resolution twenty-three dash forty-one A. I'm making that motion, sorry.
I'll second for purposes of discussion.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to amend resolution twenty-three forty-one A by Ms. Curler, seconded by Mrs. Bishop.
So, Ms. Curler, if I can comment or question?
Please.
It goes back to my original statement of, like, what is the park area of the mill pond? And to city staff, do we care if the waterway is not part of the designated park in referring this to a Parks Board? Does that matter, because now council has expanded the scope with this resolution?
As to whether the city council, I guess, cares, I don't know that I can speak to that. I don't think we have, the Mill Pond Park certainly encompasses the access. Whether it encompasses the waterway, I'm not sure on that one either. With that being said, I believe the city council has broad discretion to refer items to a committee that they believe has adequate expertise to provide the recommendation and insight that it is seeking. So I don't have any, I don't have any concerns from that, from that perspective, in that it's not, it's not precedential necessarily, that it permanently expands the authority of your committee, you're simply designating a task for them to act in an advisory capacity on this limited topic for a limited period of time until they provide you with what you're seeking. So hopefully that answers your question. As far as technically whether it, that the waterway is a park, I would have to tell you that at this point, I don't know.
And maybe that doesn't matter for these purposes, is what I'm hearing. Okay, thank you, Mr. Daley.
I think one thought I would have, again, in support of this, I guess my two thoughts, my primary thought is wanting to be efficient with our city resources, so rather than creating a new committee with a whole new group of appointments and city council liaison and so, and staff support, to kind of use the existing structure that we have. With the Parks Board, Mrs. Bishop, you are our council representative there, and so it would be an opportunity for you to make sure that, you know, what the council's seeking from this, that the Parks Board, you know, understands it and is able to address it and take in, you know, historic information and public comment and so forth to make sure that, you know, the issues that you're raising are addressed.
I think I'm agreeing with you, Ms. Curler, in terms of streamlining resources and certainly everybody's time, my time included, especially if I was gonna be the liaison for the other committee, so I see the perks here. My only other question is in terms of time and getting public comments and maybe having a public hearing would, and I would help with this, just make sure we could have the use of maybe a room that could be broadcast or would have a larger forum. So I think as long as we could schedule something like that, I'm sure I can do that with the Parks Board, even if we had to meet on a different date. I think that's probably fine to get that type of feedback that we're looking for. I think that could be facilitated.
That's great, and I'm curious if your thoughts, I, it was just kind of a guess on what would be a reasonable period of time for them to work on this, and Mr. Waters, you maybe had some thoughts on that as well, but if this is approved and assigned to the Parks Board tonight, they really just have, what, five or six months to work on it? I don't know if that's sufficient, or, we're not on a particular timeline, other than that, you know, people that are interested in having something done out there would want to have, you know, have this moving forward, so thoughts?
My thought on that was, I originally was thinking about a deadline for the ad hoc committee, but then my thought was, by the end of the year, it may not be enough time to pull all the resources together and do all the proper follow-ups. So that's why I thought maybe a six-month period to report back would be a good, a good process, at least after that first report back after six months, we could decide if we need to put a deadline on them at that point, or if we allow it to go to the next six months. But at least at the six-month point, it would give council an opportunity to review where they're at, and if we needed to, uh, to give additional input or deadlines at that point, so.
I wouldn't hesitate to ask for an extension either, if I thought that was necessary, so. So, I mean, that's where I come from on that. Parks Board does only meet once a month, and it has not been a stickler for that schedule, it appears. So if we needed additional meetings, I would foresee that as being a consideration, but I think to give us a deadline of, you know, the end of the year is reasonable to start, and we can just see how it goes.
Perhaps under section three, I had proposed to submit it, the Parks Board shall submit its final report to the city council by December first, 2023, could potentially revise that to submit its initial report, and then that would sort of leave the door open, that, you know, maybe that's a progress report and we need more time, kind of a thing?
Ms. Curler, I'm fine either way. Honestly, I would leave it.
Okay?
Yep.
Leave it, and then the Parks Board can ask for more time. Mr. Waters?
I guess I'm leaning more towards the ad hoc committee, because that would allow us to get, um, people that have a vested interest in the mill pond, the local residents, the different agencies around the county, people from the Parks Board, people from Joint Rock Lake, people from maybe the Rock Lake Improvement Association. I know we only have five seats, and I probably listed six there, but it does give us a good opportunity to round out, um, a good professional team that could give us nice feedback here. And, um, I, you know, I like to give our different boards responsibilities that can help the city, and I'm all for giving the Parks Board more responsi, more responsibilities, I'm not sure if that's the right term, but give them projects to give good feedback to the, for the community and to council. But I'm thinking that this is more of a, an ad hoc-type committee would serve as better is my thoughts, so.
Okay, we have a proposed amendment that we're considering right now. Any further discussion? Mr. Fields, any thoughts?
I think the Parks Board, in the past, has done a good job of, you know, following up what Mr. Waters has talked about, well, bringing different individuals in on these type of projects and big events. I guess I'm comfortable going either way, because I believe the Parks Committee could bring those resources in. I know when I was involved in the Parks Board, Patricia was critical and attended meetings often, so we got a lot of good feedback from her. So I think, I think if it's done correctly, either process would work well.
Okay, any more thoughts on the proposed resolution twenty-three dash forty-one A, which is an amendment to the original resolution?
Ms. Curler, I do just want to address the last part of Mr. Waters' point, in when he listed off all of the groups, organizations that could be represented or have a piece of this, and he jokingly said, oh, it's probably six, and there's only five spots. I did limit it to five spots instead of like seven or nine, because there's such a thing as too much input in a voting body. And also, you know, it's just not possible to include everybody, but to give the board, or if we're referring this back to the Parks Board, the Parks Board, the power and authority and, um, the council's support to call in the experts that they need to, without having those experts necessarily needing to be a member of that board. And then having those members be able to take in that expert input and make a refined decision or recommendation from that. So that was my thought process to that, just to address Mr. Waters' point there.
Mr. Waters?
On the motion before us, which is the, referring to the Parks Board, I would like to amend section three, the duration. The Parks Board shall formally report to city council every six months on their progress. Period.
I'll second that.
Okay, just a point of order, Attorney Drescher, so is this his proper procedure to make a motion to amend an amendment that hasn't been voted on yet?
Correct. Yes, that can be. The other route would be, yes.
Okay.
In the manner that it has been, it's just a subsequent amended to a motion that hasn't been adopted yet.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Fields, to revise section three duration to read the Parks Board shall formally report to the city council every six months.
On their progress.
Oh, on their progress.
I wanted to report on the weather, Mr. Waters.
Or the lake levels, whatever.
Okay. Any discussion on that, proposed amendment? Okay, can we have a roll call vote on the amendment to language in section three?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Ms. Curler, could you just repeat yours?
Oh, aye, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Motion passes four zero.
Okay, so we have resolution twenty-three dash forty-one A as amended. Any further discussion on that resolution, which would be a referral to the Parks Board? Okay, can we have a roll call on resolution twenty-three dash forty-one A as amended?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Motion passes three one.
Thank you again, Mrs.
You'll need one more vote, Madam Chair.
To adopt, correct.
So you had the motion to amend the...
Oh, right.
To amend the amendment, then you had the motion to amend as amended, and now you have the main motion, which has now been amended to vote.
Okay, so how do we refer to the main motion?
As amended then. Twenty-three forty-one.
Okay, all right, so now we need a final vote on resolution twenty-three dash forty-one A, which would be a referral to the Parks Board regarding the mill pond.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes three one.
Okay, we got it? Thank you again, Mrs. Bishop, because I know it was a lot of work to put that information together, and I hope that we can mutually make sure that people that we're aware of that are interested in the mill pond issues can reach out to the Parks Board.
I think too, just because now it's not an ad hoc committee, I personally am gonna be inclined to reach out to the people who have spoken to me and say, like, hey, here's how we're moving forward, and, you know, we invite your input, you come to the next meeting, whenever it's on the agenda, type of thing, so.
Fantastic, fantastic, and I like your idea of, you know, working with the Parks Board to build in some intentional public input on it. Okay. Oh, my computer just died on me, okay. Thank you, everyone. So we're on to agenda item F, which is resolution twenty-three dash forty-two, a referral to the Joint Rock Lake Committee regarding water levels. Misty, would you read that title, please?
Resolution twenty-three dash forty-two, city council referral to Joint Rock Lake Committee regarding Rock Lake water levels.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash forty-two, referral to Joint Rock Lake Committee regarding Rock Lake water levels.
Second. Okay, motion by Mr. Waters and seconded by Mrs. Bishop. So similar to the last item, this is a topic that we've received a lot of constituent contacts about, and I took the initiative to draft this one, so I'd be happy to talk about it. We've heard from some of our public commenters today about interested in a public forum, and I think it's, um, critical that people understand how the dam works now, what the order is that the city is subject to, and I think it's important that we continue our policy of following that order. But because we've had a couple of years in the last three years where there's been a lot of drought, it seems reasonable that we should at least look at, is, has something changed? Is there any reason that we might want to consider, um, changing the operation order? And I think it would be helpful to have this committee take a look at what is the process, find that out from DNR, report back to us, and also to look at some of the data that DNR might require of us, and give us a little bit of analysis or recommendation on that. We're certainly not subject to, I don't think we're bound to revise the order, just because we asked the committee to work on this, but it seems like we need more information if we were to contemplate wanting to revise that order. So that's my goal, is to ask this committee to help us gather that information and develop some recommendations. Mr. Waters?
I know that Mrs. Trier took the advantage to talk about it a little bit during public comment, but since we are in a public forum, can we discuss a little bit of the current process and procedures dealing with the water levels here at the lake?
Certainly. Director Schreiner, are you still online?
Yes, I am.
I know you've had some initial conversations with some contacts at the DNR. If you could just provide a summary of the information you've learned to date, and then obviously Director Schreiner will be continuing to collect information in preparation for any action by the, by the Joint Rock Lake for a recommendation, or eventually the city council.
So currently, we are mandated by the DNR to regulate the dam and the lake levels based on the dates that are perceived. So we have May first is when we can begin, um, basically adjusting the dam to summer lake levels, and that was first developed years ago, so what we're, what we're working off of is data based on, at the newest nineteen ninety-five data from the Wisconsin DNR. DNR. Now, the city, if we're managing the dam, we have to abide by the Wisconsin DNR mandates for the most part. I have had conversations with Will Disser, who is the actual dam safety engineer. He kind of oversees, he's the liaison between the city and the Wisconsin DNR as far as how we manage our dam. And he notified me that very rarely do municipalities request dates to be changed as far as when that lake level can be adjusted, but it's fairly, or it has been done in the past, that lake levels themselves have been adjusted. So from my understanding is that the City Council would basically provide a recommendation or a request that the DNR adjust the time that the dam is adjusted for summer lake levels, and any additional data would be requested by the DNR to supplement that. But from my understanding, this this is a possibility. We would just need a couple interested parties to basically make a recommendation to Council and City Council reach out to Wisconsin DNR, which I can facilitate.
And I apologize, I know Ms. Cicero also made comments on the water level, so both both parties did earlier in public comment. Is there any other organizations besides City Council that could make recommendations to DNR on the Rock Lake water levels?
That's an interesting question. The town has, the town of Lake Mills has jurisdiction over the actual waterway, so whether they could petition to allow the 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 actual water levels, the summer and winter water levels to be adjusted, I don't know the answer to that right now. The city is specifically tasked with the operation of of the dam, which is what is adjusted in order to allow those levels to begin. So I think it, I think the the city would certainly need to be, there would need to be a formal request from the city as the managing party to change those dates. There may be, I think, the benefit of Joint Rock Lake is that it's a intergovernmental body, and so, and a request, I think, may be stronger if it comes with a joint request from both the town and the city. But I would need to do more research to determine if another entity could make that request other than the city for the for the dates.
But is appropriate for Lake Mills City Council to make that request?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
It's my understanding that the city is the owner of the dam, right?
Correct.
So legally, we are the owner, so certainly we would have standing to make that kind of a request. I did have an opportunity to talk to the town chair for the Tonneau Lake Mills last week and notified all the, asked the clerk to notify them that we would be considering this, just to keep the lines of communication open, and the town chair thought this was an appropriate step to have this joint committee do this. So at least from the town chair's perspective, he didn't have a concern with us asking the committee to work on this issue. I would think if the committee comes back with a recommendation that the city petitioned to change the water levels, we would maybe want to have some more communication with interested parties and stakeholders at that time.
Thank you.
I I think we at least should get an answer on some of these procedures outlined in the resolution if we decided to act. For instance, I had a boat owner tell me a couple weeks ago that he had to put his whole truck in the water to get his boat in the water. That's how low the levels are. So if it's something that we can at least look at and know what to do in the future, if levels get worse, then we can have that information.
Yeah, the the only thing I would add is that adjusting the dates may or may not, it's it still is weather dependent, so it may or may not affect the water levels, you know. It certainly would provide more opportunity if that rain came earlier to take advantage of that rain. I just want to make clear to the anyone listening that the the dam itself is not what currently is causing the low water levels, that it that it is the lack of rainfall. So we're not letting an undue amount of water go through, pass through the dam right now in order that that is keeping those water levels low.
And there have been years that there's heavy spring rains and water level rises very quickly and can flood some of the lower lying areas. So every every year can be a little bit different. So any other questions for Mr. Schreiner or myself, or any discussion on this? I I guess I'll just add one last comment. I had proposed that we get the report back in November. That's only four to five months, but knowing that some of the partners who have spoken here today have already started to gather some of that information as well as Mr. Schreiner, I'm hoping that it'll be fairly, won't be too too rushed for them. And as you said, Mrs. Bishop, they can always ask for an extension. Okay, any other discussion? Right, hearing none, let's have a roll call vote on Resolution 23 dash 42, referral to the Joint Rock Lake Committee Regarding Rock Lake Water Levels.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Okay, on to Letter G, Resolution 23 dash 43, which is regarding the wastewater treatment plant annual report. Misty, would you read the title of that resolution, please?
Resolution 23 dash 43, authorizing the city manager and staff to submit the Lake Mills wastewater treatment plan compliance, maintenance, annual report to the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 23 dash 43, authorizing the city manager to submit the 2022 CMAR, which is the compliance, maintenance, annual report.
Second. Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mrs. Bishop. And I would note that we do not have a recommendation from the Public Works Board on this. I know that they had to cancel their meeting last week because of a lack of quorum. Is that correct?
Oh, that's correct. We would not have been able to obtain a quorum for this item specifically, and so it does come without a recommendation. But the CMAR is due by June 30th to the DNR, and so we were not able to, timeline did not allow for a rescheduling of that meeting for them to be able to offer a recommendation.
Okay. Well, thank you for that update. And having said that, I think we will ask our chief wastewater operator, Bill Kiesling, to come to the podium, and you can tell us all about this report. Since you sat here all this time, you might as well come on up and talk to us.
Why is there so many 100%?
Well, it's the best I could do.
Okay.
Welcome, Bill.
I guess I don't need to give a long, I don't need to go through the whole report. I'm sure you've all looked at it and you've seen it's it's looks pretty good. It's all As. We've talked about water a lot tonight. Some things to note is, I mean, if you look at the flows at the treatment plant, we are impacted by rainfall as well. And so we we do still have I and I issues out there. I'm I'm sure we've got a lot of sump pumps that are still connected to the sanitary sewer and things, and I can see the flows go up and down. If you look at the report, we're probably up about, an average of about 100,000 gallons a day from the previous year, '21, which was a drought, very dry year. But if you look at this report, the flows aren't very high, other than, I think it was June. June, you see, we're almost hitting that. We're at .96. So, I mean, that's that's getting up there for flow, and that's indicative of storms and rain we had in June. Overall, I guess the the report is is good. It's all As. We had three, we had three sanitary sewer overflows. Those were all on Ferry Drive in the same area. The city moved swiftly, and we replaced that that line that was causing us a problem. So hopefully, we won't have any more of those issues there. And other than that, I guess the only other thing maybe to note in the report is that we've, like, like everyone, we've had some staffing issues. And so 2022 was another tough year where we were a little shorthanded, but we're we're working hard. I guess everybody's trying to be creative and address those moving forward. So I don't know if you have any questions for me. If you want me to go into any more detail on the report, I can, but I think it's already kind of been a a long meeting, I'm sure, for everybody, and you got more ground to cover. So I can certainly delve into it more, but I, it's it's all As. So.
Thank you.
Any questions? I just have a two comments, but one is some I appreciate that you noted in the report the impact of the staff vacancies, and, you know, sometimes that means you can't get as many of the the maintenance things done as you might like. But I appreciate that you just kept everything, kept kept it going and with the A ratings. And I guess my second comment would just be that I think we are fortunate to have a dedicated and experienced operator managing our wastewater plant. So thank you for that, and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call on 20, Resolution 23 dash 43, which is the wastewater treatment plant compliance, maintenance, annual report?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you, Mr. Kiesling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is Letter H, which is Resolution 23 dash 44, regarding emergency medical and ambulance services agreement with Ryan Brothers. Misty, would you please read that title?
City Council Resolution 23 dash 44, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Ryan Brothers Ford Atkinson LLC for the provision of emergency medical and ambulance services.
Your motion?
I move to approve City Council Resolution 23 dash 44, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Ryan Brothers for the provision of emergency medical and ambulance services.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, seconded by Mr. Fields. Mr. Daley, would you like to give us a summary of what we're looking at tonight?
Sure. This contract is the culmination culmination of collaboration in many discussions between city staff and Ryan Brothers staff. Some of the key points in it to call your attention to, it's for a three-year term. In that initial three-year term, there is no no termination except for cause, which is defined within the agreement. There's a 270-day notice period if either party intends not to renew at the end, at the end of that initial period. However, after the initial three-year period has passed, there is a provision for a no-cause termination, and that 270-day notice requirement just carries forwards after that three-year initial, three-year initial term for any renewal.
So it's an automatic renewal?
It is, yes.
One year?
Three years, I thought.
Another three, an additional three-year term, an additional three-year term at the renewal, but the has the provision for the no-cause termination within it. So at any time dur- during the renewal period, 270-day notice has to be given, and then the city can be exit from the contract, which is the same for Ryan Brothers if they chose to terminate the contract as well. Annual increases are tied to the ambulance inflation factor with a floor of 3% and a ceiling of 6%. And there is also a mechanism that is included to add additional territory if an opportunity arises, or if one of our neighboring communities would like to, A, are allowed to join at the same per capita rate that the city is paying. 50% of that additional revenue goes to Ryan Brothers. 50% the city may do so, may do with it as it wishes. If there's any questions on specific clauses within there, myself, our attorney, Drescher, will do our best to answer them. But they are, they have been working with and with the fire department to set up operational plan, operational plans and how they're going to work together, which calls how paging systems will work among the two ambulances. So they have been working on that as well as the parallel track for approval at the state, so that they will begin on July 1st. Any questions, we will be happy to answer them.
Is any hand up? Ms. Curler's looking at me. She saw me go for the microphone. Okay, thank you, ma'am. So first point, I noticed that the Lake Mills Fire Department is a signatory, which I at first found strange because they fall under the city, but it looks like they're in the appendices, there's a couple of specific provisions with how they're going to interact with.
It was a request by Ryan Brothers to add them as a signatory. They do fall under our jurisdiction, but we also felt that there was no harm essentially in adding them as a sign, as a signatory to the contract.
Okay, no, that's what I figured. I just wanted to make sure. Ms. Curler, I had a couple other points as we move down the contract. May I address those, or do you want to get people?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Let me see here. And I know this was like a hard negotiated contract, so I'm not gonna get into some nitty gritty here, but I want to go down to special event, page three, that definition, and and then the subsequent definition for dedicated ambulance. I was a little concerned about some of the language because for special event, it says special events may be staffed by dedicated or non-dedicated ambulances with the provisions stated below. But even with the below, it was a little confusing as to who determines who's going to staff the ambulance at a dedicated or non-dedicated event, or whether it's a dedicated, like, those terms are just used interchangeably too many times to refer to too many different things. I'm probably not making sense, but.
I can tell you, my understanding of it is that if the, if a organizer requests a dedicated ambulance, they will have to pay for an additional Ryan Brothers apparatus to come and staff that event. If they, if they're okay with a non-dedicated ambulance, as in the ambulance can leave that event to respond to a 911 call, then that is a different conversation. We also do have the Lake Mills Fire Department ambulance, which we could make available for special events. Attorney Drescher, do you have any additional?
No, I I shared some of your your concerns with regard to those definitions and kind of what it will look like in practice. So that clauses work to be added up with.
Yeah, I guess we we use the term non-dedicated in a non-defined way, and then we use it in a defined way as well. So, okay, that helps a little bit, as long as that's the understanding between the parties. I might come back to that later. One other comment was in the material breach of the cause section, can we add a provision along the lines of Ryan Brothers has a requirement to immediately notify the city upon the instance of revocation or suspension of their licenses or permits by any authority? And if they don't notify us immediately, that's an immediate, or that's a material breach?
The same clause is in existence with regard to insurance, and frankly, I just, I read that into the document. They must be licensed and in good standing to operate as our provider of the service under, in under and in accordance with this agreement. So that specific language is not there, but I think it goes without saying, if there is a breach of that specific item, it would be cause. They need their license to be able to operate under the agreement.
So you don't find a value in adding the notification element as well? You have to notify us if?
I I think, I think we can, and it would be similar language to the breach of the provision of insurance, of maintaining insurance. Whether or not it's necessary, I think, is a fair question, as the license is conditioned, a condition of the agreement, and they must maintain it throughout. If if notice is required, then we can, we can certainly add an immediate notice clause there.
Okay, if we can, I think that would be helpful. I may have had one other comment, Ms. Curler, if you can bear with me. Do, Mr. Drescher, do you want to motion for me to add that clause?
That's, that's what Drake just asked as well. My feeling on these documents is there, you you see the document that you expect to be adopted right now. There are certainly changes that could still occur to the document. I wouldn't include anything that was substantive or changing or like pulling the wool over the council's eyes by any means, but there may be more. may be more development on this document. And I don't find that as necessarily a substantive change. If you want to go through the formal process and add to the motion, that's in front of you, the resolution, excuse me, to specifically add a clause in a specific section, then we'll follow that direction.
Does you want to go ahead on that, or do you want to?
I'm gonna, can I think about it?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Waters had something.
So the current document that we're reviewing tonight, that's been agreed upon by the city and Ryan Brothers at this point?
My speaker wasn't on. My microphone wasn't on, but the current document that we're reviewing tonight has been agreed upon by city staff and Ryan Brothers staff at this point?
Yes, the clauses and everything included in here, we believe we've come to an agreement on in principle, yes.
Okay. I just wanted clarity on that. Thank you.
I had a question, or I guess I just wanted to highlight, there is, I think we're all aware that there's a lot going on in state government and possibly in federal government as well regarding additional funding that might come to communities for emergency services, and might come in different ways. And I noticed that there was kind of a acknowledgement of that in the fiscal management section of this, where the city might go seek funds that would be entitled to municipalities, and then those are our funds to do with as we see fit, but that Ryan Brothers as a transporting, emergency services entity might be eligible for state or federal dollars that, you know, that would go to an entity of that classification. Am I explaining that correctly?
Yep, I think the specific references are eleven-point-six and eleven-point-seven. But that was the intent of those, of those clauses, was to differentiate between funding that is made available to so-called feet on the streets, so the actual, the ambulance transporting agency, funds that are intended for those, and then funding that's intended to municipalities to, as the broad, my apologies, the broad provider of EMS services, and the city is contracting with an agent to provide it, and that funds that are intended for municipal assistance, taxpayer relief, things of that nature would be retained by the city.
Mr. Waters?
So that's not any different than how we've been operating with Lake Mills EMS? Currently, I know that they, they had some, some funds that they, they've received in this last year that they applied for grant money, and that was separate from, from the city.
I believe in practice, that's correct. I don't believe that specific provisions, such as the ones that you see here, are included in our agreement with Lake Mills EMS, but those instances have occurred in the past where Lake Mills EMS has been eligible for grant funding, and they have applied for and received those funds.
So it'd be similar, under this contract, that Ryan Brothers could apply for those funds?
That, that's, yeah, our intention behind these clauses, that's how we would see it operating.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I had a follow-up question. I had previously asked Mr. Drescher for Exhibit A, because the contracted service area is defined as territorial limits of the city of Lake Mills and other areas and entities contracted to receive EMS services, was the last part of that language, in the event that we add on another service?
Correct.
So Exhibit A then only shows the territorial limits?
Correct.
Thank you.
So any additional territory that was added, a map would have to accompany that, as well as the population count, in order to calculate and to show what the service area is and calculate what the cost would be.
Thank you. And I thought about our previous discussion in regard to the extra language. I, like I said, I know how long this has been negotiated, and if Mr. Drescher is comfortable that my subject matter is covered, then I don't really want to make any amendments.
Okay, thank you.
I did just want to make sure we're all clear on this idea of additional townships or, you know, additional territory. So as I'm reading this document, the way it would work is that if, let's say hypothetically, the town of Asteland wanted to receive services from Ryan Brothers, they would contract with the city, or have some kind of an intergovernmental agreement with the city, and then they would pay the same fee that we're paying per capita to us, and we would give half of that to Ryan Brothers. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that is correct.
So we would get half the fees, and Ryan Brothers would get half the fees, if that were to happen?
Correct. Sorry, the thought left me. I guess the only other thing I'd point out in that is, so either one could be, could bring forward additional territory for contemplation, and that there's, I believe the clause is no reasonable refusal. And so that both entities, the intent is to have a mutual agreement to add additional territory, and that any objection should be accompanied by a reasonable justification for that objection.
And it makes sense that we would receive some of those dollars, since we're housing the equipment and, you know, managing the contract. Any other questions, comments, discussion?
Mr. Fields, you gonna be quiet on this one?
I guess, reading through it, the only thing I didn't see, I was hoping that we could include getting monthly run reports, so we could track times and how everything is working.
I believe.
There's a reporting requirement.
There's a reporting requirement. They will provide regular updates to myself, and I believe it's quarterly updates to the city council specifically. So they should be here before you, four times a year, providing an update on the service, and then regular contact with myself, which I can also pass along information as they provide it to me to the city council.
I think I saw monthly meeting with the fire chief as well?
Yes.
So it'd be similar, but a little different than what we're used to.
Yep, I agree with that. Correct.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to a roll call vote on Resolution twenty-three dash forty-four, emergency medical and ambulance services agreement with Ryan Brothers.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
And thank you very much to staff for all your work. I know it's been a lot of work in the last couple months since the council gave this direction, so I appreciate you getting us to this point.
Before we move on, can, can I make a quick comment?
Please.
Now that we've approved, moving forward here, Ryan Brothers, I'd like to take this moment and thank the Lake Mills EMS. Their time of service with the city will end the end of this month, and Ryan Brothers will begin July first. They have, the Lake Mills EMS has done a great service to the community of Lake Mills. I've worked with some of them. Some of them are my friends. And I know that this service has been ongoing for, I think, forty years now, something to that, to that.
Forty-nine, I believe.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, forty-nine years this month.
And of course, Mr. Fields was one of those Lake Mills EMS volunteers, so I just wanted to extend a huge thank you from the community of Lake Mills to the Lake Mills EMS for the service that they've provided for those forty-nine years. And hopefully they'll stay very active in the community and, and find other ways to, to serve the community. But thank you for, for all those, those late-night calls and, and rescuing the citizens of Lake Mills, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Waters, for highlighting that. I wonder if we could have a resolution recognizing their service to the community in an upcoming meeting?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to agenda item, letter I, which is Resolution twenty-three dash forty-five regarding the Lake Mills Fire Department ambulance fee schedule. Ms. Te, would you please read that title?
Resolution twenty-three dash forty-five, adoption of the Lake Mills Fire Department fee schedule for emergency medical services.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution twenty-three dash forty-five, adopting the Lake Mills Fire Department fee schedule for emergency medical services.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, seconded by Mr. Waters. Mr. Daley, any comment?
So the fee schedule that you see before you is, was developed based off of information that I had received from Lake Mills EMS earlier in this process, so it closely nears what they have been, what they have been charging. It is also, the fire department did compare it to other entities in the area and across the state, and believe it is competitive. So this approval, it's recommended to approve this via resolution, so that we can be a bit more nimble and change it as, as we may need to, if we, if we were to fall out of market, or be less competitive, or not be recovering costs to the extent that we're comfortable with. And then I would also anticipate that after our new fire chief is on board, he'll have an opportunity to review these and provide a more, another, a more in-depth review over time as this service gets going, and then probably coming back to this body around the end of the year, if changes are warranted, to update it for going into the future. But this is a, a good start here, and mirrors the fees that have been charged by Lake Mills EMS recently.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments on Resolution twenty-three dash forty-five? Okay, let's have a roll call vote on Resolution twenty-three dash forty-five, which is the adoption of Lake Mills Fire Department ambulance fee schedule.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Okay, next item is letter J, Resolution twenty-three dash forty-six, amending the impact fees. Ms. Te, would you read that title, please?
Resolution twenty-three dash forty-six, amending impact fees.
Is there a motion?
I move to accept Resolution twenty-three dash forty-six, amending impact fees two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mrs. Bishop. Staff?
Ordinance requires that these impact fees are updated annually. They are tied to the Consumer Price Index, which for the period, period for the review was eight percent. So this, this resolution updates those with that adjustment.
And I think we do this every year, don't we?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, if not, can we have a roll call on Resolution twenty-three dash forty-six, amending the impact fees for two thousand twenty-three?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Can I move to, to move Resolution twenty-three dash forty-seven in front of the discussion on the community center, just so that we can move on with the police chief sitting in the crowd and address getting him moving forward for the night?
I was just about to do that, and Mrs. Bishop just passed me a note asking the same question, so I guess we're all on the same mind. So.
Thank you.
With no objection, we'll move forward to item L, which is Resolution twenty-three dash forty-seven. Ms. Te, would you read that title, please?
Resolution twenty-three dash forty-seven, accepting a donation from Lake Mills Community Foundation in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for use by the Lake Mills Police Department to purchase new body cameras and squad cameras.
Is there a motion, please?
I move to accept Resolution twenty-three dash forty-seven, to accept the donation from the Lake Mills Community Foundation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Fields. Welcome, Chief.
Oh, good evening. You didn't have to move me up. I was late to the meeting, so I was happy to wait.
That's okay. We were, you were helping people on the night out, right?
I was just gonna start out, yeah, we had our national night out tonight, out at Real Hope Church. So it's a great event every year. We had a great turnout, lots of fun things and demonstrations for the community to see, and lots of interaction between not only the Lake Mills Police Department, Lake Mills Fire Department, and our citizens, but also some other area fire departments who came, and other groups who came and showed. We also had our Black Hawk helicopter actually showed up this year, so I don't know if you heard it fly overhead on the way home, but it was here and flew home. So that was, that was a good event tonight. So a little bit of community outreach, it's always good. So I will just speak on my proposal, the resolution, and kind of how we got to the point of a twenty-five thousand dollar donation, and what the, what my plan is for it. I gave most of this information, if not all of it, to you in the letter that I included with your packet, if you had an opportunity to review it. But basically, in my assessment of our equipment within the police department, I was looking at how do we get on a replacement schedule for a lot of our equipment and technology that does have to be replaced over time to keep it fresh, to keep it operational, and to keep it, keep officers outfitted with the equipment that they need to do their job on a day-to-day basis. So one of the things I identified were our squad cameras and our body cameras. We initially installed our squad video or camera systems in two thousand and seventeen. So we have them in four of our marked squads, our primary squads, that are out on the road every day. And the life expectancy of these units is about five to seven years. Some last the lower end of that, some last the longer end of that. So we're coming up, we're in year six, we're coming up towards the end of the, the life expectancy of those units. And then our body cameras have been purchased over time, bit by bit. We originally had V-View cameras, and we replaced those with, with WatchGuard body cameras to match the squad video camera system that we had, because they really interact and play well with each other. So in two thousand and seventeen, we started replacing our body cameras with our WatchGuard cameras. And over time, we've done that. Our last purchase was in two thousand and twenty, and those have a life expectancy of about three to five years. And the reason it's shorter on those is because they're actually worn on your person every day. They kind of get banged up, beat up. They get used more often, so the life expectancy is a little bit shorter on those. So some of our cameras, we've exceeded the life expectancy. Some of them were coming up to the lower end of the life expectancy. So my plan, and when I started this project, was to say, how can we start this kind of rotational replacement schedule for these items? Rather than having to buy them all at once, you know, a big capital expense, let's buy a squad video camera every year, and let's buy a body camera or two every year. You can go to the next slide, Dave, if you don't mind. So what I found in doing that is it's, it's not really feasible, and I'll get into why. But in looking at, can we just start to replace some of our pieces of equipment, the models that we have of both of our squad cameras and our body cameras are no longer manufactured. The manufacturer is still in business, they just have a new model, so they're not making our current model anymore. They're making the newest and best thing. The new models that they do offer now do have some significant benefits to them, such as combining the body camera and the microphone. Currently, officers carry a body camera on their vest, and they also have a microphone for the squad camera that they clip onto their vest or onto their shoulder. And that's two different microphones that are used for two different systems. The new system, the body camera actually serves as the microphone for the squad camera as well. And when you activate one camera, the other automatically activates. So they really interact with each other. And then you can blend that video at the same time, so you can actually play the two different video systems back, and they're perfectly synchronized in time. So you have two different views. Same thing with if you have multiple body cameras on scene. You can play them back at the same time, so you could have multiple officers' view of the same situation at exactly the same time. A partial replacement, so that kind of that partial replacement schedule of buying a camera or two every year, actually adds additional expense, and it does for a couple of reasons. One, if we have old cameras mixed with new, we need some additional equipment to make them work with each other and to sync with each other, just some different docking stations in the cars, and some different docking stations for the new cameras to download in the station versus what the old cameras download through. The other thing is, is we have some additional expense in the maintenance fees that they will charge for these. So replacement of one camera out of all of our eleven or ten body cameras right now, and four squad video cameras, will incur a licensing and maintenance fee on all of our cameras going forward. This isn't unusual. This is kind of what manufacturers are doing with technology, especially law enforcement technology. Now, instead of charging you so much for a piece of equipment, and them incurring the maintenance, the ongoing maintenance and development fees for new software and technology, they're essentially charging you an annual or a monthly maintenance and licensing fees. essentially charging you an annual or a monthly maintenance and licensing fees. So we are now affording the cost to upgrade to the next bit of software or the next bit of technology. So it's common across law enforcement technology now. Taser is doing the same thing. Body camera manufacturers and squad video manufacturers are doing the same thing. And you even see that across technologies like Microsoft is now doing licensing rather than just selling you a product at an upfront cost, they're doing an ongoing licensing fee. So if we bought one new body camera, let's say, and we put it into service, that requires us to switch to their new evidence management software, which is very similar to the old one, just a new version. And then they would then charge us a maintenance fee on every camera that we own that is using that software. So we pay the maintenance fee on all 14 cameras that we currently own, even though we only had one new one. And I'll get into what those costs would actually be. Next slide, Dave. So I look at the three options. One would be the partial replacement, you know, kind of the cycle, one or two cameras per year, not really feasible. One, there's some increased costs associated with it. But two, just keeping up with the technology and by the time you rotate the last camera out, they've probably now changed on to their next version of the camera and now you're messing the new system with what was your, with what was your new system. Two would be to purchase all new cameras just outright, upfront cost for the equipment. And then we just pay their maintenance fees, which I'll get into numbers in a minute. And three would be to purchase all their new cameras through a five-year contract. So the contract is something that goes along with the maintenance fees or licensing fees is a lot of these technology manufacturers, excuse me, like Taser, are trying to just get you on a contract, which is kind of like an all-in-one package. It's all of your fees, all of your support, your warranty on the equipment. Basically, it's all-in-one, you pay us one fee and we take care of everything and you don't have to worry about, you know, the à la carte or the nickel-and-dime approach. None of it's cheap by any means. But in this case, if you go to the next slide, Dave, it actually works out to our benefit. I was very surprised that their, their five-year package is actually cheaper than if we were to buy the equipment outright. So on the left, if we were to purchase four squad cameras, 11 body cameras, and I say 11 because we have 10 officers, maybe we'll add one in the future, but if not, at least we have a camera in case one goes down or needs to be serviced, we have a replacement for it. In that case, we would either have to buy a server to store the video on, because we currently have a server that has also reached end of life, so it has to be replaced. Or we would have to pay for cloud storage for our video. And that number is actually, the 18,000 is actually very low and I'll get to it on the next slide when I get there. The same, the training and the system setup, the annual maintenance fees, so they've charged $195 per camera per year just for their maintenance fee. So over the five-year life of the cameras, it would be about $11,700. An extended warranty if we wanted to purchase it, because they come with a one-year warranty. But to do apples-to-apples, the five-year plan is a full five-year warranty. So I looked at the cost of what it would be for a five-year warranty if we purchased the equipment and that's $15,000. And then the installation is actually the installation of the squad video or squad camera systems into the squads, because we have to page GONCOM to actually install those systems. It's essentially tearing the car apart on the inside, running all the cables within the car and then putting the car back together so all the cables are hidden. So the total cost, if we were to do that in year one, is like $69,000. But the total cost over five years would be $81,625, assuming we bought the server and we didn't pay for the cloud storage. The five-year contract on the right, exact same equipment that we're looking at, they actually sell kind of a whole package of a squad camera, a body camera, and then all the warranty that comes with it. So four of those packages would give us four squad cameras and four body cameras would be $49,200. Buying seven additional body cameras to get us to the 11 would be $20,580. The setup fee would be $1,200 and then the install of the squad video systems would be $2,000. That contract includes the five-year no-fault warranty on all cameras, unlimited cloud storage, so all of our video that we create would be uploaded to the cloud and stored there for free. For free in the sense that we've already paid for it, it's not really free. And then they would replace all of our body cameras, not only at the beginning of the contract, we would get new ones, but in year three, they would replace all of them again. And that kind of leans towards the three-to-five-year life of a body camera is year three, they just give you all new cameras. The total for that package is $72,980.
Chief, can I ask a question before you leave that slide? I see there's a different price for the system setup on each side, but I see training mentioned on the left side. Is there training on the contract side?
So it is actually the, the one on the right, I think I attached the quote to your packet. It's actually $1,500, but they discounted it to $1,200. So if you look at the quote that I included in your packet, they have a base price for everything and then they have the discounted price that they're offering it at to us if we buy the package. So it would be 1,500, it's just discounted a little bit because of the package.
And I guess what I just wanted to make sure is, is there training included in the, under the contract proposal versus the outright?
Yes. So they will provide the training, we need to be able to operate it. Because we have watch guard systems currently and we're, we would potentially stay with watch guard systems, our officers are familiar with the software, they're familiar with the evidence management software when we download the video and we want to review it. They're familiar with the systems, they would look a little bit different, but functionality is really about the same, but they're gonna charge us for that setup fee, really is what they're gonna charge us. So these numbers surprise me a little bit, because normally when you kind of do the Cadillac, what you think Cadillac package that is all-inclusive, you're gonna pay more for it. And in this case, we would actually pay less. And in this scenario, get more, because we have the unlimited cloud storage for our video, rather than having to buy and maintain a server here locally that would store all of the video for us. Because with a server on site that we have to maintain, come additional IT costs when anything goes wrong with the server that we own. With cloud-based, they, they cover it, they store it. If there's a problem, they work on it, they figure it out and they make sure that we have access to our video. So those are kind of the numbers on its face. If we were to try to make the purchase outright exactly equal to the five-year contract, we technically would have to have cloud storage as well, rather than buying a server and maintaining it on-site. And next slide, Dave, I think I have it on there. No, I don't. The cost of that, I put in the letter to you, is they combine the maintenance fee of $195 with the cloud storage fee for a total of $900 per camera, per year. So I think the total I said would be an additional 8,000, I know I have it in here, $8,375 per year over the five years, if we went to unlimited cloud storage and bought all of our equipment outright. So it'd be an additional $40,000 on top of that $81,000, which doesn't make economical sense to do that. So that's why I'm not really presenting it as a, as an option. I don't want to spend more money, I want to spend less money and get the best deal that we can. So what really brought me to you today is I had a couple of funding sources that were presented to replace cameras. And then I went out and sought some funding on my own, because I figure if I can provide as much funding as I can, it's more palatable and we can replace it at less cost to the citizens of Lake Mills. So the police department has just over $18,000 in designated ARPA funds that are separate from the general ARPA funds that the city has already received and has. These are funds that I can purchase certain qualified things, body cameras are one of them. And I can then get reimbursement from the state through our ARPA account, up to $18,000. So body cameras are one thing we can use in four, squad cameras as well. Another thing are uniforms and equipment. So I have designated some funds, because I've replaced some ballistic vests for officers and bought some uniforms for our new officer. So I've kept some of those ARPA funds to the side, but I've decided I could dedicate $13,000 of those funds to this project. We have a donation account, we do an annual donation appeal where I send out letters to businesses in the community and they're very generous, so I would apply about $5,000 of our existing donation funds towards this project. I've applied for a small rural and tribal body camera grant, so small rural and tribal agencies basically, or who qualify for it, in the amount of $12,750. I applied for that in January, the deadline was February. It's the federal government, so I still haven't heard back from them on whether we're gonna get this grant or not. So I don't have any idea. We may, we may not, but I'm kind of assuming we don't when I look at the bottom-line number. I applied for a grant through the Lake Mills Area Community Foundation. They've been very supportive of the Lake Mills Police Department in the past. They've bought things such as our automatic license plate readers and other technologies for us in the past. So I thought this would be a good thing to apply for a grant for, because it really is a technology need and that's one of the things that they like to support. So I applied for a grant in the amount of $25,000 and I was awarded that grant. It is specific to this project, the purchase of body cameras and squad cameras. So if we don't go ahead with the purchase, then I would just have to return that money to them. But that's why it's before you tonight. So if we crunch all of those numbers, the total project cost is about $72,860 or $980, I think is the number. I have about $43,000 of funding currently available, between the $25,000 from the community foundation, the $13,000 in ARPA and the $5,000 in our donation account. I have $43,000 available, which would leave a gap of about $29,980, assuming we don't receive that small rural tribal body camera grant. So, because I don't have that budgeted, I am here before you to say, before I incur an expense that would be, have to be budgeted in future capital budgets, I wanted to have this discussion with you, understanding that it's not the normal budgeting process to ask for money outside of the budget process, but it would incur a liability going forward if we were to purchase these cameras. I think it's the right time to do it. I think it's better to stay ahead of the curve with this technology than fall behind the curve and have technology that's not working. There is, now this is according to the manufacturer and I believe them, because if you look at the price quote versus what they're giving us on the price, they've increased their prices about 40% since they gave us their quote. And that's what they're quoting now. So they will honor the quote that they gave us if, if we purchase it, but otherwise it does increase about 40%. So then the remaining payment options, if I applied the $43,000 this year towards this purchase, would be to pay it in one payment in 2024 out of a capital budget, or to take that $29,980 and split it up into four equal payments over four years, 2024 through 2027. So it's about 7,000, just under $7,500 a year. I think that's my last slide, Dave. So I guess what I'm, what I'm asking of the council tonight is, I think it's a unique opportunity with the $43,000 in funding that I have available. The ARPA funds have to be spent before the end of this year. The grant would have to be spent on this project if we accept it. And then I have some donation funds available. I think it really is a benefit to the city at this point to incur less than half of the cost of this project, which is going to have to be done in the very near future, I think, any way we look at it. As long as we plan on keeping this technology, which I don't think there's any way we can't keep body cameras and squad cameras with the accountability that is expected out of our community and the accountability that they provide in law enforcement. I think that this is, although certainly an expense for the city, I think it's about as palatable as we can probably make it.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Mr. Waters?
I'll go first. On the ARPA funds, I guess I wasn't aware that there were separate funds for Lake Mills Police Department and the city of Lake Mills. I must have missed that in the budget in the past. Can we get, can City Council get an update on how much is left in the Lake Mills Police Department ARPA funds, when that expires and also for the city of Lake Mills ARPA funds?
Yep. So the, the police department funding, the ARPA funding is actually ARPA funding that the state received. And then the governor chose to use that funding as a, as a grant to police departments. And so that is how, that's how that mechanism came. So that, that money does not reside with us. It's not, it does, it's not reflected within our budget, because you have to submit your qualified expenditures and then receive reimbursement from the state for them. So the police department allocation was $18,000. The chief had indicated he, some ballistic vests and the amount of $5,000 in other uniform expenditures, so $13,000 that is, needs to be expended before the end of this year. And then Sam, can you update them on the general ARPA fund?
We have $292,063.88 plus the interest gained over the last two years, two and a half years, right at 2,000, so 294,000.
And what's, what's the timeline for spending that, that's a little longer, right?
You have to spend it by 2026, but it has to be allocated by December 31st, 2024. So it has to be allocated to a project by the end of 2024.
Thank you. Was that your question?
No, does that include the $30,000 that we just allocated for the EMS contract?
That would be subtracted from that amount.
Okay.
So 261,000 and change remaining.
Okay, great, thank you. And my next question is capital expenditures. Normally, of course, capital expenditures are in the budget. I guess you probably get a pass, Chief, because you started in October, the same time that we passed this past year's budget. So, but in the future, as you indicated, you take capital expenditures, you put them on a spreadsheet and you spreadsheet out every year where your capital expenditures are coming from. And I guess I would fully expect to see that in the future, so.
And I would reply, that would, that was what I expected as well, would be, and when I looked at a replacement schedules, to say that I'm going to include in my capital expenditures every year, replace however many cameras we need to replace to stay current with them. And then as we did our research and got the numbers back, it kind of came together in the picture that I presented to you as a picture that I received, as well as some of the other funding opportunities we had. So I absolutely understand going forward that, I, I don't come to you asking for capital expenditures outside of the budgetary process.
In saying that, I, I do respect the funding, the, the funding sources that you went out and, and found to, to help pay for this expense. So thank you for, for, for making that effort and, and presenting a, a nice package to us tonight. So thank you for, for your efforts there.
Mrs. Bishop?
Chief, on the payment plan, is there an interest rate on that?
There is no interest on it, no, it's a straight, straight payment.
And just to follow up on that, I think I heard you say you would pay the $43,000 this year, so it wouldn't be five equal payments, then there would be less due, roughly $30,000 due in the subsequent four years?
Correct. We could technically, so they, they outline, and I think in my letter I outlined it for you, pretty much an equal payment plan. The first year's a little bit higher because of the, the setup fee that they add on, as well as the $2,000 installation fee we would have to pay. But otherwise, it's four equal payments of $13,925 in years two through five. So we could technically just pay the first year's payment that was due and then pay the $13,925 in years two through five. I figured since I had the funding available and it's really dedicated funding, especially the grant, I would rather just pay it and reduce the cost that we would pay over the next four years.
Yeah, and I think that does make sense. I mean, the grant, you want to show that you're using the grant right away for the, the expected purpose and then you've the ARPA, you've got to spend that this calendar year. So it's really just the donation fund that you would have flexibility on.
Correct.
So again, you're, what you're proposing, our resolution, you're asking us to accept this grant, but then it does come with encumbrance in the future, four years of roughly $30,000, unless you get that additional grant.
Correct. The total would be just about $30,000.
Mr. Fields, any questions?
Nope, just following along on the numbers, it sounds like a relatively good deal at this point.
As you said, it's kind of surprising that the installment payment is a better, the five-year contract is a better deal than the outright purchase.
And I, I don't have the reasoning behind that, it surprised me. But I'm not gonna argue with them if they're gonna provide us more for a little bit less, so.
I was struck by one of the comments in your letter about the advantages of this technology for evidentiary purposes and it seems like that's, I would think your staff would be appreciative of having those tools for their work.
There are, and not only for evidentiary purposes. And I mentioned, you know, the accountability, right, and the transparency that's expected in law enforcement in the profession. So it provides that, you know, to a degree. It also, in my experience, and we've had these types of systems around for a long time, squad cameras first and then body cameras. time, squad cameras first and then body cameras, is it really helps, I think, to prevent frivolous claims against officers and against the city, because we have video evidence of what actually happened in an interaction. If an officer did something wrong, that's captured too, absolutely. But more times than not, in my experience, largely more times than not, the officer's doing the right thing. And once we present a little bit of evidence of how the interaction actually went to someone who's making a complaint against an officer, generally that complaint disappears because they realize the interaction didn't happen, either as they remember it or as somebody told them that it happened. So there are many more benefits, other than the evidentiary value and the transparency and the accountability. I like to think, too, I always tell officers, we're always being recorded by cell phones or something anyway, so if we always act like somebody's recording us, and if we're recording it too, I think we're doing the right thing, you know, more often than not. So there are many benefits to having these cameras. And I don't think we're in an era or a day and age where we could ever get away from them, especially since we have them.
Yeah. With the time of the meeting, can I call on the question?
Sure. Do you want to go through that formal process, or?
Just do it informally, all those in favor?
All right. If there's no more questions, we'll go to a roll call on Resolution 23-47. Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you being here. Okay, so now we will go back to Letter K, which is a discussion or decision on amending the municipal building community center policy. And we don't have a resolution on that, but we do have some documents. We don't need a motion to discuss it, do we?
No.
Okay, all right. Mrs. Bishop, would you like to start it out, since you've taken on the task of updating this policy?
I will be quick. I provided a memorandum with the main changes. First off, this has seen so many changes, at one point, the entire document was track changed. And you couldn't change it anymore without your computer freezing. So the main changes, I'll just reiterate briefly for the people who may be watching eventually. One, changes to the political meetings rules, including the discussion of candidate committees, which was a specific issue that we had at the beginning of this year. So that change will address that. Two, changes to the user designations. We get away from classes, we go to three specific user designations, which I think makes it easier to understand. Changes to the fee structure, particularly between residents and non-residents. And then changes to, or the addition of a creation of a formal city council review procedure in the event that there's a disagreement or a request from a waiver from a citizen. So those are the main changes there. Mr. Waters, again, had some comments, which I appreciated, as well as some identification of typos, so I will definitely fix those. I'll open up the discussion to Mr. Waters or anybody else who wants to discuss something, make changes, proposals, whatever.
Mr. Waters, would you like to go first?
I can start, sure. First, I'd like to thank Mrs. Bishop for her work on this document. It's a huge step forward. I have some additional ideas, but a lot of good stuff here, so thank you for doing that. And I think that'll help the community understand how they can go about using the facility and what the rules are and those type of things. So one of the, one of the things I'd like to discuss is the political meetings. I'd like to see that charged at a non-resident rate. And I'm not sure, I would be open to maybe nonpartisan events being free, but I'm not sure if that's within legalities, it's something we'd have to discuss. But I think we should be charging for the political use of our facility. I don't know if we want to take this one at a time, or?
Can I just ask a clarifying question on that? So that would be even if the candidate was a city resident?
Correct.
You're just saying that category of if it's for a political purpose, they would be charged at the non-resident fee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So all political would be at a non-resident fee, unless we want to make a waiver for nonpartisan elections. My second thought was the government users. I see two types of government users. I think the primary would be the city of Lake Mills, city of Lake Mills groups, groups that fall within the budget of the city of Lake Mills. And then the secondary, I mean, we want to play nice within our sandbox, I guess is the right term, but we want to play nice with the other government entities in the area. So I would see them as secondary. So that would be like the school districts, the county, people that have their own budgets that are separate from the Lake Mills, the city of Lake Mills, they would fall under a secondary governmental use. So they would, basically, the primary would get first option on the building use, where the secondary would get secondary use before it would fall to the next category. Does that make sense?
It does. And the only comment I have there is, like, sometimes, like, Jefferson County has an entity that comes in and they, like, use a room for a meeting. I would want to leave it, those types of meetings as much as possible, maybe to, like, the city manager's discretion or the building coordinator's discretion. But I absolutely see your point that city of Lake Mills government users get first priority in this building at all times.
Right.
And so I don't have a problem making a distinction between the two, as long as the rest of the council members are okay with that.
Okay.
And maybe I just, I had some similar thoughts, and I agreed, I actually had a note on my copy, city council and city boards first. Like, we get first priority. So as you said, you know, school district is another governing body, but if we need this room, then maybe they need to find another facility. You know, that was kind of what I was thinking, or that they would be second tier.
And a quick question to Drake, like, legendary Lake Mills, would that fall under, like, the city budget area, or would that fall outside of the city budget?
We are a dues-paying member, and so our dues are part of the city budget, but they are a separate legal entity.
Okay.
So I would say that they don't fall under the umbrella of the city.
Okay.
That'd be my thought.
So they probably fall under the secondary group, then?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I had the same note, that I consider, you know, they're valuable partner, but I don't think legendary Lake Mills is government, so I wouldn't put them as a government user.
Oh, so you wouldn't put them as secondary government? You would put them somewhere else?
No, I would put them under the sanctioned, like, they would have the opportunity to be sanctioned.
A sanctioned user?
Sanctioned user, because they're regular, we know they use the building regularly, yeah.
Okay. And then, my thought is that the primary government user, that being the city, would be allowed to bump other activities on the schedule. We would try not to do that, if at all possible, we would try to work around, if there's no other option, the primary would have the ability to bump. And hopefully, it's not like a wedding or something like that. I think we'd be sensitive to that issue, but.
So I have the last part of that paragraph, A, under user eligibility. Government users will be given priority scheduling, but you want the additional authority to bump somebody who's been previously scheduled, who's not a city of Lake Mills user.
I guess where that's coming from is the school, the school has a similar policy, and the school is allowed to bump other entities out if there's a school function. For instance, like a wrestling tournament, maybe schedules a time, but that wrestling tournament, since it's not part of the school district, could be bumped if there's a playoff game, a playoff game that is a school function, they can bump that wrestling activity out, which is like a club activity. I would think that the city could do something similar to that. I mean, we would try not to bump, but at last option, if we have no other options, we should reserve that, right? Does that make sense?
Can I make a comment to that?
Yes.
I agree with that. You know, I'm just thinking of a scenario where whoever's coordinating it isn't, doesn't know maybe a future election date, and we're scheduled something in the community center, I'd have to have the ability to bump that out for an election. I mean, there's things that we just have to be able to do. So I agree with that.
Okay.
Or if there were to be a special election that would be called, you know, maybe not even something that's currently scheduled, that would be something that'd come to mind right off the bat.
And then I think my last comment is just the, and I may not be terming this right, but the Lake Mills Emergency Response Team, there's probably a different name for that, but if we need to, we need to put a clause in there if that, if there was ever a case in a time of need where the Lake Mills Emergency Response Team needed to have shut down access to this building, or have the priority to use one of these rooms, that would override everything, I guess, that would, that would be the top priority. So that would bump everything. And of course, that would be an emergency situation, but it probably wouldn't be much notice, but.
Correct. Okay, I can certainly add a line about the emergency response team getting ultimate priority.
Is that the proper term?
I think it can be, alternatively, it'd be if the Emergency Operations Center was activated, but the city's emergency response team is accurate as well.
Okay.
The other point to that is, we originally had two additional rooms that you could schedule that we've taken off the list completely. One was the South Conference Room, we can no longer schedule, I don't remember which one we took off. And then the other one was, we had the EOC Center that you could rent, and we just took that off, too, because we said there was, like, sensitive equipment in there, we don't want it being moved around. So that operations team does have that room that nobody is going into and using.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I was actually going to ask about that tonight. So the South Conference, no, South Conference Room?
Right, we took that one off.
That's the one that now has the TV screen in there, whatever. So that one's not available for rent. And then is the emergency operations, is that's what, is the first floor conference?
Right, it's not available for rent either.
Not available, okay.
That's all I had for tonight. I don't know if anyone else has comments?
Ms. Kurler, did you want to go through comments, or could I respond to one of Mr. Waters?
Sure, yeah, go ahead and respond.
The other one that I wanted to respond to, Mr. Waters, that I would really have to think more about, and I'm inclined to disagree with, would be charging political meetings for the non-resident rate. To me, one, political speech is the most protected form of speech, which is why I wanted Mr. Drescher to specifically look at that, to see, like, are we in line with protecting that type of speech? And I also see us charging the non-resident rate to possible candidates as making it harder for local candidates, maybe without any or a lot of funding, to really enter the race or to have a place where they can have a say. So from that perspective, I would not be inclined to charge the non-resident rate. I would say if you're a resident here, even if it is a political meeting or a forum that you're hosting, we would just charge you the normal resident rate, as if you're hosting, you know, a bridal shower or any other type of event, as long as it meets the other political meeting rules.
And I guess that's where I stated the nonpartisan, so a nonpartisan election would be, like, city council is nonpartisan, so that would be local government. But if it was more of a state government-type situation, even if it is a local resident, I think they should pay the fee.
For a campaign of, for a political event.
For a campaign for state office.
I disagree, so I guess subject to whatever the other council members would think.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess we'll have to discuss it. And you're not thinking, you're not, like, something like a listening session or whatever would not fit into that category, this would be somebody who is campaigning for office.
Correct.
I would write proposed language for the next meeting, and then we can, you know, vote yea or nay, or if you want to do it that way.
So we can do amendments or something to that effect?
Right.
Okay.
I'd also like to ask Attorney Drescher, in the meantime, to research whether we would run afoul of any First Amendment issues if we differentiated between nonpartisan political speech and partisan political speech. So we'll look into that prior to the next discussion.
I had a couple of comments as well. One of them is, let's see, on page seven, there is an update, which I understand the reasons why, there's a prohibition under Letter F for lighted candles, glitter, confetti, and wall decorations. It says they're prohibited, but then two paragraphs down, there's a reference to cleanup, needing to remove wall decorations. So I wasn't sure, are we sticking with not allowing wall decorations, or, so anyway, one of those needs to come out, I think.
Yeah, what was the next paragraph?
It's under Letter F, is where they're prohibited, and then the second paragraph under G says they have to, you could just say decorations, because I suppose there could be decorations that are not on the wall.
Yeah, yep, no, I'm going to take it out, thank you.
Something like that.
If you, if you put them up, take them down, but let's not.
Yeah.
Okay, good catch.
Let's see, the bottom of page six, so this is under fees. Letter E, I guess I wanted, I have a comment, but I wanted to understand, the projector and screen, is that what's available downstairs in the community center? Or is that the cable TV stuff up here?
That is, Misty, can you help me? That's available in the community center for rent, and those are, like, the only two items that are available. We had, like, a small other list of, like, platters or whatever, we took that out. I'm sorry, what was the actual question?
There's a projector and screen that'd be available downstairs, and then there's also projector and screen available in the council chambers.
Okay, and I can see the projector here, so, okay. So when I read the last part of that, Letter E, it talks about using cable access TV equipment. And I guess I have a question about that. Number one, do we even want to allow room renters to be able to request to use cable access TV equipment? If we do, I think they should be contacting the city manager. I think that should be rare, and it should be going through the city manager or some stated policy of who we would allow it, rather than just somebody asking Dave, you know, then he has no criteria for whether to say yes or no, and it's, and there would be time commitment. So I just wondered if we should think about that a little bit more, like, do we want to allow an outside, you know, room renter to use cable access TV equipment? And if so, they would need to have staffing with it, which would need to have a fee.
I think that does need more thought. My initial reaction is, I think, you know, fair use of equipment, right? If it's provided to some, but not all, what is the differentiating factor between who it's not being provided to? So the simpler term is if it's not a city-sponsored event, or perhaps a government or public event from a government entity, that we don't, that we don't offer the cable TV recordings for private events, for example. But if there was a county event, or a city event, or a state event, you know, something of that nature, that we could, that we could try and accommodate that for. But there is a cost to the city of, so we'd want to think about, you know, charging for that, for that time as well. So I agree, that does, we need to put some thought into that.
And I know there's a whole separate, you know, I mean, potentially, we could have a whole separate policy on cable access TV, and there's a whole committee, you know, that hasn't been very active in the last few years, but, you know, a regional committee to deal with that. But I guess at least in terms of this policy, my opinion would be that it should be limited, and that then there should be a fee if it's not limited.
So just to focus on this section, that equipment fees for the projector and screen, I'm going to say that should be coordinated with probably the building coordinator, who I think is going to be Eric Schreiner.
Yeah, and that, I think, is fine, was, you know, that has, you had fees in your schedule for those.
Okay, yep, and the CATV is different, no, that's a good point. I will, I'll work with city staff to see how we want to offer that and how the building would work, if we do.
That sounds good. So then I guess my last thoughts are in the sanctioned user section, and I'm sure this has gone through lots of discussion and debate, so here's more, you know, to add to it. I guess I liked that there was a process for people to apply to be sanctioned users, and I liked that there's a fee to basically get on the list, if I'm understanding it right, there's a fee to get on the list and an application form. And then once you're on the list, you can use rooms for free up to once a month, and then weekdays, one weekend, without fee, if I was reading that right.
I took out the weekends, I think, let me double check. I said Mondays through Fridays during the day, or a weeknight up to one time per month at no cost, the permitted use. Room reservations by sanctioned users on Friday evenings and weekends, or more than one time per month, so weekend and evening use would have a fee.
Oh, got it, okay, sorry, I read that wrong.
Because those are times where, you know, if people are, I think if we want to be remotely competitive at providing a space, you would want to make those paid users priority.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I like that, and I like that there is a kind of a upfront fee to get on the list.
The fee translates, if you were to use the room once a month for two years, it's $8 per use. I mean, that's, like, incredible. So I thought that was really reasonable for the wear and tear that would be incurred.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess.
Is that a one-time fee, or is that every two? Yeah, yeah. Um, so I guess, is that a one-time fee, or is that every two years you need to renew that?
That's, every two years you would renew your application to be approved as a sanctioned user. So every two years, it's two hundred dollars.
Okay.
So, um, two thoughts I had on that. One is, would we want to allow a lower fee for a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization? And it doesn't mean that it's, um, um, I don't mean that it has to be zero, but would we want to take that into consideration with they maybe pay a hundred dollars versus someone else, you know, that's not a nonprofit pays, pays a little bit more to get on that list? Um, and then I guess the other thought that I had is, um, it looks like to be a sanctioned, um, user, the process that you have is that they would come to the city council every two years. And I feel like that's less simple than how it is now. You know, where I, I would like it if we could come up with some criteria, and maybe there's not a lot to it, um, you just have to, you know, apply, and you have to say whether you're a nonprofit, or say whether you're a resident, or say whether you're a non-resident, and you have to, um, you know, identify who is sponsoring your organization. Um, I, I would like it that the staff could administer it, I guess is what I'm thinking. And that the only things that would need to come to council is if somebody doesn't agree with the result that they get from our policy. Um, I think that would be more efficient for staff not to have to prepare lists and resolutions and, and bring them to council every two years.
Can I talk a little bit about the thought process?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so, um, the reason for having it come before council, it wasn't to make it harder, but to bring about in the open some of what was being decided, because we had a sanctioned user list that nobody knew about for a long time. Or nobody knew who was on there, who wasn't on there. Um, in terms of the process, what I was thinking in talking with city staff and creating this application process was that it would really be, um, more like a consent agenda item. So unless there's somebody that you want to talk about, then you could take it off. Um, so we were trying to make it simple in that way. Um, and again, just, I want to have it be a fair, open process that could be evaluated. So if it goes back to a city staff process, that's fine, I agree with you. There would need to be some listed criteria. In regard to the criteria, um, when I was crafting the sanctioned user language, what was really tripping us up with the old policy was the term organization, and what was an organization? And how do you define that? Is it something that's, um, you know, incorporated somewhere? Is it a non-for-profit that's registered with the IRS? And I just totally took out the organization language, because do I care if you're a non-for-profit that studies, um, I'm just going to say native fish, because we talked about that. Or do I care if you're a local organization that does it? I feel like, um, making designation requirement be there is sometimes yet again a barrier to entry for local community people who have a purpose or a goal, and they just want to get together and exercise that in a place that should be available for the community. Um, so that's some of the rationale behind that. Again, I'm open to, this is our, the city council's policy, so I'm open to changing some of that. But I did want to get that out in the open as to why some decisions have been made and some language had been put in or omitted.
Well, and I actually really like that, you know, any group, organization, or individual. So, you know, it can just be one person that requests to be the sanctioned user, and they can bring other people to their meeting with them. It can be a book club or, or whatever. Um, so I like that. I just, like I said, I'm, I'm thinking that the simplest possible is for the staff to be able to do it themselves. And I guess what kind of caught my attention about coming to council is, um, um, the language, it's in the middle of page five. It says, "When considering an application to become a sanctioned user, the city council may consider any relevant factors. We must consider the impact of the proposed use on the community." And I thought, well, our, our, one of our concerns with the current policy is it's unclear what the criteria are for how the city manager makes a decision. And so then I just felt like, well, this is not clear either, and it's at the council level. So just trying to think about how does a, how to make it easy for, you know, any resident or group to come in, and they know they're going to get approved if they just fill out this form and pay this fee.
Right, I, I think I included the language about, uh, council must consider the impact on the community, because like that had been in prior discussions about what an organization did or why they should be given this user status. I am happy to take that out if we don't want to have that requirement. Um, I'm happy to add in other requirements if we feel like those are useful for, to guide staff in making the determination.
Yeah, yeah. And I, you know, I, I so appreciate all the work that you've done, because now you've been thinking about it and working on it very hard, and appreciate the staff involvement as well. And I'm just, again, trying to make it like, let's have it as, be as clear and simple as possible and not a lot of hoops for people to jump through. You know, I think one of the things I really like about this is the fees are really what are kind of differentiating a piece of it. Is, um, you know, you pay more if you're a non-resident, so maybe a non-resident isn't going to try to bring their book club here, because that, that fee's going to be more for them. Um, or, you know, not on any, not try to become a sanctioned user. So I think that kind of helps, helps keep it local.
So, uh, on your last couple of points, Ms. Curler, should I craft some language that would bring this back down to a staff decision? Or how do you want me to?
Well, that would be my preference, that I, I don't feel like it needs to be, you know, made at the council level, but I don't know what other folks feel.
Would it be, um, staff level with a consent agenda? Is that what you're saying?
I'm open to that. That's kind of where I thought it was headed, and maybe I just didn't state it so clearly where staff goes. Okay, here are the people who submitted the application. Really no requirements, you submit an application, you can be an individual, you pay the fee. And, you know, if you want to use it one day per month, you're a sanctioned user as long as it's approved by the council.
So it would come in front of council once every two years as the consent agenda?
Yep.
But then if somebody apply, doesn't apply in that two-year cycle, then we could be seeing them, you know, regularly. I, I just don't want to have debates at the council level about whether or not to approve a user.
Okay, I see the point.
I feel like it would be better to just have some easy criteria. Um, and I don't know, maybe, maybe we keep it to a resident or a nonprofit to be sanctioned. That if, you know, unless you have a resident who's willing to sponsor your, your application to be a sanctioned user, then that's not really, you know, we're trying to serve our taxpayers and nonprofits that support our community. That, that's my feeling.
I think the language that you just said, like, if you're a non-resident organization, then you should have a resident sponsor you. I was trying to get around that, but doing the same thing by just saying an individual can come in, and we don't really care who the individual brings in. Like if they have all their family from Watertown come in once a month, does the council care? Probably not. But that sponsor, whoever they are, whether they're from the city or not, would be the main point of contact, they would be responsible for damages. Like it's, it's to have a user who is accountable is really the main goal, I think.
I think that's a really good point. I mean, that's where the sanctioned user application comes in, that whoever is listed as they're the contact person, that they understand that they've got the responsibility to make sure there's no damages to the room, that, yeah, that they have that accountability. So there's a little bit of, of to it.
I, I guess the reason why the resident fees would be lower is because they're taxpayers to this city government, which is the city building. And, you know, it's all tied together, where a non-resident isn't paying those taxes. So that's, that's why those fees would be higher.
Okay, so am I still hearing that if it's a not, the criteria for a sanctioned user for staff to review and approve would be still if it's a non-resident user petitioning to be a sanctioned user, they would have to have a sponsor from the city?
I don't know that I would, um, I don't know about that, to be perfectly honest. But I guess one of the things I was thinking about, so since a sanctioned user gets to use the room for free for a certain number of periods, um, we can use the fee to kind of incentivize or disincentivize, you know? So we could have the, the 501(c)(3) group pays fifty bucks for, for, uh, two years, and the resident pays a hundred dollars, and the non-resident pays two hundred dollars, or maybe more.
So you're saying just for the sanctioned user application fee, also differentiating resident, non-resident, or, uh, 501(c)(3)? You want to have three payment categories?
Only because once they're on the list, then they don't have to pay the other fees. And so that's really the only way to...
Well, they wouldn't as long as they're only using the room one use a month. So if they have, like, they want to have a second meeting or like a, an additional thing, then they would pay the regular rate, whether they're a user, I'm sorry, whether they're a resident or non-resident.
Right, right. And then those have different fees as well.
It's a lot.
Yeah, it is.
But if you want to do, let me put in, again, I'll, I'll draft some language on that recommendation, Ms. Curler, for the sanctioned user application fee to be different, whether you're a resident or non-resident, and we can go from there.
Okay. Um, and I'm sorry, I did have one more, I guess, question or comment. I'm trying to remember where I read this, but, um, is there still something in here that says generally the council chambers is not rented out to non-government?
There is, I can find it.
Uh, weekdays? Okay. Yeah, I thought I saw it in there, but I don't, didn't know if I made a note, and that would kind of go along with Mr. Waters', you know, early comments as well.
Ms. Curler, on page three, it says for council chambers, generally this room is not available for rent. However, a request can be made to and approved by the city manager in his or her sole discretion.
Okay. Phew, aren't you glad you volunteered to work on this?
No, that's okay. I, um, so I'll take in these recommendations. What I will do is I will provide a redline version and a clean version for the next meeting. And, um, I'll get with city staff for any other considerations that I need to have, and, um...
Come prepared with amendments.
And not that you want to prolong this, but you do have until July 18th for the next regular council meeting.
Perfect, I'll need it.
So that would give you a little bit more time.
You got anything, Mr. Fields?
Hey, you guys had all great points. Um, the one thing I would add at the end is page fifteen under the fees. Um, you have the CATV operator blank. I would just keep all staff fees the same if possible. That would make it easy, so keep it the same as the, uh, a hundred dollars for staff cleanup.
Okay.
I think it'd be just simplified if we keep all staff. Less confusion.
Hundred dollars per hour?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And I, uh, again, appreciate so much, Mrs. Bishop, that you're working on this and that's all the staff input. And I'm hoping that, um, whatever we come up with as a final result will be something that Misty and Eric and, um, their crew will be happy with as well. So it will be easier to administer and clearer for our community. All right, any other questions or discussion on the community center policy? If not, we are ready to go to item 10, recommendations for future agendas. So just as a reminder, we have June 28th, next week, Wednesday at 6:00 PM. In this room, I believe, is a work session on Sandy Beach. Um, July 4th, we have no meeting. Uh, that's the second, or the first Tuesday falls on the holiday, so no meeting. So our next regular council meeting is July 18th. And that meeting includes the public hearing on the comprehensive plan. So after our kind of initial adopting the minutes and so forth, the public hearing would be the, the next item at the beginning of that agenda. Um, and then I think, I guess we'll have the community center policy. Is there anything else that we, anybody else has suggestions for future agendas?
So we'll, we'll need to take action on that comp plan that night as well, right?
Sorry, I forgot to mention that. So I think we had, um, identified July 24th as a special council meeting to take action on the, on the comp plan. So then we'd have the public hearing, and we'd have about six days break in between.
Correct. If, I guess I would say if the council is prepared to take action on July 18th and knows that it's either going to accept it or refer it back, that nothing would keep you from doing so. Um, but we did talk about the July 24th date as a special meeting for specific action on the comp plan.
Okay.
And I know a couple of people thought maybe they might not be able to be here in person for July 24th, but hopefully everybody can be here in person for the public hearing and, you know, hear from our constituents. So thanks for clarifying that, Greg. Any other, um, future agenda items? Um, on the 18th, I think we'll have a closed session for our final check-in with Drake before the annual review. That was the other thing we had mentioned to do on the 18th. Drake, anything else? You're just glad to get through June, I'm sure, and get a couple of days off. Anything else you can forecast for us for July?
Um, not that's off the top of my head right now, but, um, I'm sure things will come up.
Okay.
Congratulations, we got through this meeting quicker than I thought we would.
We did, yes, less than three hours. Thank you, everybody, for your preparation and, and, um, engagement in the meeting. And, um, if there are no other agenda items, we will, I will officially adjourn this meeting at 9:45.
Thank you.